All right, good night, everybody. This is the 6:00 PM Monday, April 24th Lakeville Select Board Meeting. We will also be joined at 6:15 by the Finance Committee. With us tonight are myself, Member Day, Member Carbone, Member Fabian here. I also got Town Minister Sky and a few other folks that will come up and speak with us this evening. We will start with select board announcements. And I'm going to say upfront, since we did have a revised agenda, you might hear me say the wrong number now and then because the printed package shifts all the numbers down, but the posted one has the old numbers. So I apologize in advance if there's some back and forth. Select Board Announcements. Special and annual town meetings will be held on May 8th, 2023, starting at 6:30 PM at Ponacquid High School. The work will be reviewed on the town's website at lakevillemass.org under News. Other documents relating to the town meeting, FY24 budget, codification of the bylaws, are also available under the News tab for review. If you're interested in serving on a town committee, Cable Advisory Committee, and Opus Base Committee, currently had vacancies and are looking for people interested in serving. If interested, please submit a letter of interest to the Select Board's office by mail or by email to t-craig-mcgee@lakevillemass.org. The Lakeville Arts Council will be hosting the Spring Craft Fling Event on April 29th, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Loon Pond Lodge at Tellwood Williams Camp. There will be crafters and artisans with one-of-a-kind homemade items to purchase to give as a Mother's Day or Father's Day gift for someone, especially someone with a spring birthday, or perhaps yourself. There will also be four adult workshops, as well as a cash bar and food offering for Fee from Loon Pond Lodge. So check out our website for additional information as we get closer to the date. And from there, I'll turn it over to Town Minister Sky for any announcements he has.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank Moniz and I, our DBW Director, had a meeting on April 11th with Beta Group and Town Council regarding the Route 79 project. We mailed letters last week to seven property owners requesting access for preliminary geotechnical work. This is an initial step required to finalize the project design. The Fire Department has received a grand award of $1,692 from FM Global for iPads to support fire planning and inspections. The House Committee on Ways and Means Budget was released on April 12th, and cherry sheets were made available on April 17th. The Ways and Means Budget provides less funding for unrestricted aid and provides $250,000 less for the SmartGrowth reimbursement. As a result, aid to Leagueville is about $271,000 less than the Governor's proposal. Aid to the regional school districts is higher, principally in transportation, but it's not yet clear what impact they'll have on our assessment. I've had several conversations with our legislative delegation. I'm cautiously optimistic they will at least see some restorative SmartGrowth funding and unrestricted aid funding that is more reflective of current trends. Bids were opened for the outdoor stage cover last week. Procurement is underway for the fire station project manager. Demolition of the John Pond Park Building was completed today, and the solicitation for the ramp at the old library will be released next week. Work on the animal shelter got underway this week. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be at 6:00 PM on Monday, May 8th, at Ponacquid High School, just prior to the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sky. Does anybody have any questions for Ari at this time? Leah?
Do we have any idea what the budget will look like? When we'll get those numbers? Do you think we'll get any numbers before our town meeting?
Probably after town meeting. Because we're just at the Ways and Means stage now. The House is debating the budget now, which we're going to pass. And the Senate will do theirs, probably in a couple weeks or two. And then they'll go to conference. And as you know, when they go to conference, you can tell me the last time that the state adopted the budget as of July 1st.
Right.
So it's not likely. I do think that, I feel like I've talked to Mr. Hassett a few times already. We're pretty confident that our local receipts numbers will be okay to support the number. I'm also pretty confident, based on my conversations with Senator Rodriguez especially, that it won't be this bad by the time it's done.
So for now, we just operate under the assumed number and work with that until we see what the changes are?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, excellent. Let's see. So you probably see I have a pattern where I'm going to try to get people out early if we can. I think I saw John Virella back there. Any interest in getting your two or three items knocked off?
Sure.
All right, sir, come on down. All right, he's going to the hot seat.
Right here?
Sure, thanks. All right, so we're going to be looking at, depending on which agenda you're looking at, either items 12, 13, or 15, or 11, 12, 14. Let's see here. So let's start off, if we could, please, with discussing the scope and work for the Classification and Compensation Study, if that's okay? I know you've got guards, if you need a moment to gather your stuff.
That's fine, that's fine. Yeah, so Classification and Compensation Study, this is something that's been on my radar for a while now. And this is something that, you know, all organizations do, both public and private, you know, on a regular basis. And that's take a look at your processes, take a look at your procedures as they relate to compensation, in terms of how you hire people, how you promote people, how you pay people, you know, and the processes that you have everywhere in between. And that's really what this study is all about.
All right.
If you recall, or you don't recall, Mr. Chairman, but Leah and Lorraine will recall, there was money funded in HR's FY23 budget for the Class and Comp Study. The intention is twofold, to look at non-union titles and compensation structures and so on, also to look at some of the governance issues that we've been identifying in the past, and come back with some recommendations on that. It's important, since this is in the operating budget, to get this contracted and encumbered prior to the end of the year. The project can continue on for a little bit into that, but that's the plan right now. So at this point, the Board doesn't need to approve this scope of work, but I would appreciate some guidance from the Board in terms of whether it's the direction we wanted to go, whether you have any concerns and whatnot, you know, that we can kind of go from there. It doesn't require full formal procurement, because it is under, it will be $25,000 or less, so.
All right. Lorraine, Leah, any comments first?
I have a few.
Okay.
So do you know when they do these companies, when they typically do these comparisons with other municipalities? Do they go as far as giving us like descriptions, job descriptions and requirements? Because, you know, you can say that the life position in another community gets paid $20,000 more than we pay, but that position could possibly require, you know, special training, special education, a master's degree, something like that.
Right, yeah, that's the point of doing it in this format, right? If we were to look just at job titles, that's something that myself or Christopher could just do sitting in our office, right? So when you look at the scope of work and what we're actually going to issue to these vendors, one of the requirements is actually that they're able to secure information that's not readily available to the general public, and the ability to be able to do just what you said, compare apples to apples. So if I have a job title on one side, I'm actually looking at the responsibilities and requirements of that job as I look at the other side. And not only that, but to also look at all forms of pay so that you can combine them equally. Some places have, you know, longevity benefits, some places don't. Some people have, you know, an education incentive, some places don't. So the study is supposed to be comprehensive so that we can take care of all those issues.
Okay. It says here that there's approximately 60 unique job titles. Not right now, but can we get a breakdown of those?
Sure.
Because I'm assuming part of those are the department heads?
Yes.
Okay.
They're totally non-union once a year.
Yeah, and I mean, I do know that in the recent past, so within three or four years, we've done like the town administrator, the assistant to the town administrator. We've done the fire chief, the police chief, the planner. And we've done so many of them, so I'm just, if you could just give us a list on what we're actually looking at.
Yeah, and to be transparent, sometimes I give myself a little bit of room in there, just in case something comes up.
Yep.
You know, where I might need to add one or two that we didn't plan on, just in case.
Yep. And then my last sort of rhetorical question, I guess, because, you know. So let's say this study shows us that, and I know some of these positions, we've actually, some folks were grossly underpaid, and I think that we've worked on some of that. But let's say these positions come back, and they really are quite underpaid compared to, you know, I guess we just have to be prepared to find the money to...
Yeah, it would be a question of sort of narrowing that up against budget reality, and maybe that we need to phase it over time, you know. One thing I can tell you is that I will not be, you know, using this study as a way to come to you with something that's unsustainable.
Right, but that's what I'm concerned about. I also don't want to lose people who all of a sudden, you know. So that's going to be the reality, that's going to be the elephant in the room, so to speak. If, you know, if this comes back, we have to be prepared for.
You know, I think it's a little far the way down the road, but my vision of what the presentation would look like, certainly the public side of it, would be to say some, you know, these positions, to say, these are approximately this percentage of the average among the benchmark. Not to say you should pay this person X, because, you know, this is not really the intention.
Yeah. But we just have to be ready for the fallout from, you know, from the actual numbers that do come out.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all I have. I mean, I will reiterate publicly, I've said it privately, I've said it publicly, but just because I've seen the way some employees were treated in the past, I'm very protective of the Board of Selectmen being the Wage and Personnel Board. I know in the past, even going way back, there was a community member that was, the Wage and Personnel Board was made up of, you know, of a lot of different types and options, and very protective of that, so just going in. I feel like, you know, folks need to be treated with dignity when they walk into the Human Resource Office and not be ganged up on by three folks to one. And that's stuff that's happened, and that's why we're working on our own Human Resource Department. I don't think it's happened since John's been here, but very protective of that, you know, appeal process that employees have, that they can appeal to the Selectmen, so that's it.
Thank you.
So 60 non-union employees?
Titles.
Just titles. So how many non-union employees do we currently have?
I don't know if I have. Probably...
Part-timers.
Yeah, just, I mean, if you can just send an email of it, that would be great. But what are your next steps, John?
So...
To get this going, if we...
The next step is to work with Tracy to get a document out to some of the vendors that we selected that we'd like to have bid on this. What we want to do is make sure that our requirements in that document are really tight, as well as that the selection process is clearly articulated. So that would be the next step to work on this, would be to get that document ready, get it out to at least three vendors, if not more, and then just sort of see what comes back, both in terms of pricing and capabilities.
Okay, and the turnaround time, as Ari had indicated, this needs to be at least encumbered this year?
The timetable needs to be really well defined.
Once we have the request document ready, I usually only give about two to three weeks for submission. And honestly, a lot of the organizations that do this kind of work, they already have it ready. You know what I mean? They get these submittals all the time, and they usually answer back with pretty much the same thing, just depending on how you set up the requirements. So the process of finding and selecting a vendor will not take long at all. And again, many of these organizations do these studies. They may have, you know, half the information already readily available because they did it through some other city or town that's comparable to us. So I don't think it's going to take us very long at all.
Okay. That's good for you, thank you.
Thank you. So both other members touched on some of the questions I have, but I also wanted to ask, to the best of your knowledge, I know a lot of us are newer here. I'm trying, Jose, I'm trying. What, when do you think this has last been performed, if at all, in the town, at this wide of a...
I wouldn't have a way to know.
I have no...
It's potentially a chance of a first.
I've found no evidence that there was a conference of study ever done, non-union.
Okay.
Questions?
Thank you.
I don't know of anything to you?
Not at the top of my head.
Leah, do you know of anything?
No, and as a matter of fact, I know the opposite. I believe that in some of the old Wage and Personnel stuff, things were just sort of put in...
Maybe they're kind of reactively.
Yeah, reactively.
That was my impression as well.
So, I mean, it's not that I'm against doing this, it's just, we just need to be...
Timing-wise, we've only got a handful of meetings left before the end of the fiscal year. So this would have to be a relatively quick turnaround.
Well, we'll be able to come back to you with product after the fiscal year is over, too. That's not an issue. As long as we have someone under contract and you can get the process moving, we'll be okay.
Do you think there's enough time to get this out for bids, get the bids in, review the bids?
I do.
Okay. All right. And who will actually do bid selection for this, given the rough size of the...
John and I would do it.
Yeah, I'll play myself an argument. All right. Do you need any other guidance from us this evening, or...
Mr. Chairman, can you make sure to add the town's position into that classification? Even though it's a common name still elected?
Yep.
It needs to be that, please.
I think that's fair.
I agree. I would not want to look at a suite of positions and include department heads and leave one out because they're elected, I don't think that's appropriate.
Because you never know if that could change in the future, too.
Right.
We've seen that happen. And yeah, the 60 unique job titles caught me off-guard, that was a good call. You know, we're just saying every department head with a different title is a unique job title?
Yes.
All right. That could quickly be called down of it. All right. Anything else from us this evening? You think you've got what you need to...
Unless there's, just because there aren't any major objections, we'll continue, we'll move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the town minister if he had already gone for a grant for this through the state? This is traditionally something that's grant-funded. It used to be through the community cabinet grants, but now it's moved to the one-stop grants?
So you're talking about the community compact grants?
Yeah, there was a lot of way in favor of the one-stop grants.
For the record, Ms. Candido Jennifer Lane?
I'm sorry, Ms. Candido Jennifer Lane.
Actually, community compact is still in place. The one-stop grant took over the Mass Works grant, but the community compact still exists. No, we do not apply for community compact for the Board appropriative funding during the FY23 budget, so we move forward that way.
All right. Okay, is anything else from us? Carry on.
All right.
Nodding heads so far. All right. So we'll move on to discuss possible changes in social media policy.
Yes.
If anybody did look at this, when Ari and I met for, and Tracy for Agenda Review, the goal is really just to get it in front of everybody, since there is a lengthy Redline document there, and kind of say, you know, let's take this back, go through it ourselves, come up with comments, and then perhaps define a date where the two of you would like comments to be returned back to you so you can kind of go through those, merge those, and then perhaps bring us an updated copy. Otherwise, I think we probably would discuss this for two solid hours this evening.
So I think that the next opportunity for, in terms of regular timelines, probably May 22nd meeting. I don't think, maybe it's a very short meeting before the town meeting. So probably ahead of the May 22nd meeting, so I'll remind you all, probably if we get comments by May 15th, we're fine.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
I mean, what, other than just a general review, what is actually prompting this? Have we received complaints from our social media use? Is this the town's...
Well, this last version was updated in 2020. There's been some changes in terms of, just out there in the ether, you know, the industry regarding privacy rights and, you know, and use of town-sponsored media. We just wanted to clarify, really. And then just information, has there been anything specific about, should there be confidential information or something like that? This is really just to clarify and tighten it up a bit.
Okay. I will say that I've already seen several items that, you know, would like to challenge, so we definitely need a meeting where we have some time to talk about it.
Yeah, agreed. I've got a number of comments as well.
Yeah, I also would like to discuss the town's actual use of social media. I do think that during our, you know, two heated topics last year, there really wasn't a place, because we just, I wanted to put more on social media and at least give people a link to the town, you know, to use other social media sites. So I don't know who makes that decision, if that has to be a Board decision of whether the town can, let's say, go onto a local site and say, here's where you can get information, not debate people, but just put links to get people... Anyone that's under 35 is not going to the town's website. That's what I know. I think that most folks don't go to the town website first. They actually use other places to get their information. So if we have any hope of getting accurate information out, I think that we need to be able to go to some of these sites, too. But again, not debate, but just say, if you're looking for the town's information, here's a link. And it gets people right to where the website is, so. I don't know when we have that conversation, if that should be part of this or not.
Any thoughts on the procedure of the policy?
I think as a question of executive policy, we've been, so you can, this is mainly something that's looked up, looked signed by an employee, that's not percolating, that we can have a discussion, we certainly can. You know, I think some of the things that Leah is alluding to were some of the sort of heated discussions last year, and, you know, we shared things on the town Facebook site, but didn't really feel comfortable sharing wider than that. And perhaps we could have, if that had been something that the Board had wanted to do. It's really a question of, you know, it's good to be king, the Board can decide what to do on that, so.
I mean, I think it's an important point, Leah. Perhaps that is a parallel discussion to the usage policy, but I think it's definitely a good one to...
It's definitely adjacent, no question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Do you have any other comments at this point?
Nope.
Okay. Lorraine, any thoughts?
No, I can hold all of my comments to the next discussion.
Okay. So we will try to get comments, and do you want comments back to you by May 15th?
No.
Okay. All right, so we will aim to do that, and then have a follow-up.
Also a reminder, everybody.
All right, and then, moving on then, we'll try to get John home. We've got item 14 or 15, depending which one you printed out. Revisit and possible vote to approve part-time assistant animal inspector job description. So this was a carryover from last meeting. In that time, at least for myself, I'll say, I think, you know, thank you to yourself, John, and Ed, there you are, for helping clarify kind of that process behind the scenes. My understanding, and please correct me, is that we're essentially reviewing and approving a defined job description that's been put out by Mass Journal Law. Once we've approved that, that gives you the ability to post it and get applicants, and then at that point, the Board of Health will take over, review those applicants, and actually make the appointment to the state. Is there any correction in that process there that we're aware of? Yes, no? That's correct? All right, appreciate it, guys. So I'll open that up for any discussion. I know we had some questions last time. Leah, I think you had questions, did you get those answered?
Yes, but since then, I've also come into some other information. One of my questions was originally, why was this coming to us? And I didn't feel as though I got, you know, an answer to that, because typically job descriptions come up to us when someone's leaving or someone's coming. So I just want to be sure that we understand why this is coming forward, that's all.
Well, again, this is, you know, a position that we want to hire for the job.
But we already have someone in it right now, right?
With it.
We have somebody who gets a slice of their position, but I guess Ed can clarify a little more.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
So going back at least 10 years ago, there's been two animal inspectors. About a year and a half to two years ago, when one of those left, and the existing one reluctantly took on the responsibilities of both. I don't think he ever wanted to, we asked him to take on that responsibility. He is now saying that he doesn't want that responsibility anymore, and he wants us to find someone else, which is how it's been since at least 2013, how it was when I first arrived here. And like I said, he was good enough to take on the responsibility, and we were just kind of happy he did. And then realistically, you know, we gave him a lot more responsibility than he wanted, and, you know, now he's...
Okay, so a change in the person doing it is what's sort of prompting this?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
And just probably bears re-mentioning, this is $787.50 per quarter. So we're looking at, what, $3,300 a year or so? Lorraine, do you have any questions on the side from last time?
No, no.
I was happy with the information I got. I think when we left the last meeting, I just didn't understand the process well enough, so thank you for clarifying that, spoken up for me. Any other questions before going to a vote here?
Nope.
Okay.
I have a question.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the part-time assistant animal inspector job position, job description as presented.
Second?
Thank you very much. All right, I'll do a roll call. Member Fabian?
Aye.
Carbone?
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye, so yes. Thank you very much, ready for helping us get that through. Get some back and forth.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. John, I think we covered all of your items tonight, unless there's something on this end?
Nope.
So you're welcome to hang out if you'd like.
Thank you.
Finance Committee, I know it's 6:15, we're going to meet. Would you be against us trying to get through Director Fahy's items? She's come to, I think, three or four meetings in a row now. That's okay? I appreciate it. All right. Director Fahy, would you like to come on up? It's all right. Doesn't both mics work, Jose?
Hello.
This one's better.
All right.
I don't think I need a mic.
No, me too.
All right, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
So I guess we'll just jump into probably the bigger one to start, so item 10 or 11. Revisit the scope of work for the Senior Center Edition feasibility study. So first of all, I just want to thank you personally for sitting down and kind of going through this with me, getting me up to speed on some of the other items.
Sure.
I really appreciate that time and getting a much more detailed tour of the facility. Let's see, Lorraine, I think you had some questions last time, would you like to read some of that information?
Yeah, well, I can find my packet here.
Let's see. It's in other documents, it's in other doc.
What number are we on again?
10 or 11.
Okay. So I had a question when this was presented to us. We had allocated $40,000 for this feasibility study, and we have an OPM that we have on-call, or a contract with, I guess. And they had presented something for $36,000, but it didn't give a breakdown for the phases, so I requested a little bit more information as to what that looked like. So it was broken down by hours. And I did go back and I did look at the fire station feasibility study, and that was also broken down by hours. So I just wanted to make sure that I was provided the same information that the residents would be provided with that breakdown. So I've received those hours. And other than that, I have no other questions.
Okay, excellent. The two weeks did give me a chance to look at this deeper. I just had a couple of comments, I think, for Ari, maybe? I noticed it said invoices would be billed monthly for the percentage of work completed. I'm more akin to paying when deliverables are delivered? Is that something that the Board would be more interested in, or...
We can put that together, sure.
Leah, Lorraine, any thoughts?
It works for me.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
I mean, otherwise, it's kind of hard to say what the actual percentage of a deliverable's been done.
Typically, what will happen on projects such as this is that you'll see the different phases of the different deliverables, and you'll see like X percentage of that phase done, and they'll bill based on the percentage of the phase that's done. So for example, if pre-design is half-complete, then the bill is for $3,250. Sometimes different phases are running sort of in parallel. So you may have pre-design happening, or you may have schematic design, and it's determined costs happening at the same time, or something like that. Then you'll see, you know, you'll see some billings from different phases. So it's not usual, especially more construction projects than this kind of project, but it's not usual to see a invoice that says, you know, this is this phase, X percent billed for that, this much has been paid so far, whatever the happens period, and so on and so on. So we can certainly structure the task order around that concept.
Correct, all right. So we got the hours, we'll work on that. The only other question I had... The only other question I had was for their probable cost, Phase Three. They're gonna give us a probable cost, but I don't know if they can forecast that over a couple of years. I don't, I'm not gonna pretend I understand the construction industry right now and what it's been doing, but, you know, what is that probable cost good for?
Yeah.
Are they looking at the upcoming construction season, a couple out? Where do they see that moving? I also was gonna say, like, I think this will hopefully get us to a much better, like, number and understanding. So when they have an opportunity to have a deeper discussion with Director Fahy and the subcommittee and anybody else, I'm hoping this kind of firms up that placebo that we had in the past and then we can kind of take a look at, you know, what's the right thing to do here? What's, what and when, really?
I think it's really likely that we'll end up with a more solid number, such as based on what could be, we could have paid, paid. It may or may not fit within the number. And if it doesn't, then there'll be some decisions to be made. If it does, it's still a good town meeting anyway, so.
Right. Yep. Okay. Leah, do you have any comments on this one?
No.
No? Director, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you for being thorough. Appreciate it.
We try. So Ari, I think you're not looking for a vote tonight. I think we've got everybody's questions answered to date.
No.
Are you happy to move forward with this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's see. So moving on, we've got discuss and possible vote to appoint Lakeville's representative on the Old Colony Elder Services Board. All right. So Director Fahy is our current representative. The new expiration date for the term would be June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Director, would you want to give us maybe a thirty-second elevator pitch on what the Old Colony Elder Services Board does for us?
So when we meet, it gives an overview on financials within their board, brings, kind of breaks down what we can expect to come forth from them in the future. Our biggest role with them right now is our Meals on Wheels program. So that's really the most in-depth I get with them now. But they, during the meetings, we just go over what to expect in the future, what they're seeing, that's gonna be up and coming and, yeah.
Awesome. Excellent. All right. Any questions for the director? No? All right. Let's see. Yeah, I believe we were pointing Director Fahy back. That's correct.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint our Council on Aging Director Laurie Fahy to the, as a representative on the Old Colony Elder Services Board with a new expiration date for the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
All right. Number Carbone?
Carbone, aye.
Fabian?
Aye.
Day, aye. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for another term.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next item on the agenda, discuss and possible vote to appoint Gail Dragovich and Patricia Mustaros as alternate members on the Council of Aging Board of Directors. So we have two vacancies right now. Council on Aging Board of Directors did vote at their April fifth meeting to nominate these two individuals. Any discussion on this? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Gail Dragovich and Patricia Mustaros as alternate members in the Council on Aging Board of Directors with annual, their appointment would end on July thirty-first. Oh, we got two possibilities. We can do one year or two years. Is that correct, Tracy?
Um, because it's so close to July, you could have just appointed that until July thirty-two thousand and twenty-four or sixty-third.
Okay. I will go with July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-fourth. That is amenable to everybody?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Member Carbone?
Carbone, aye.
Fabian?
Aye.
Day, aye. Yes. Director?
Thank you.
Can get you home a little sooner than you expected.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the members, two different sets of appointment forms in the, signed both of one for twenty-three, one for twenty-four.
Okay.
Just in case.
You want to sign both and you throw out the wrong one?
You can sign them both and I'll get rid of the one that we didn't use.
Sounds good. All right. So we got Finn comment here. Thank you for the wait. Appreciate the patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
All right. So we've got a couple of things with Finance Committee tonight. I'll just kind of read them out and then let the chairman open their meeting. First one is to meet with the Finance Committee and Town Moderator for a warrant review for the May eighth, twenty-twenty-three special and annual town meetings, as well as meet with Finance Committee to discuss applications and possible votes on joint appointments to fill vacancies on the Finance Committee as they have two openings currently. So Mr. Chair, go ahead and open if you'd like.
Okay. This is the April twenty-fourth Finance Committee meeting. And the time is six-thirty-seven. Members in attendance, Careperson Plonker, Member DeRoses, and Member Constance.
All right. Sir, do you have a preference on which item to do first?
Um, yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's talk about the appointments first then. I think that's an important one. So last, going into last weekend, we thought we had two people interested, actually three. Finance Committee, if you go and read the bylaw, actually has very specific membership requirements where a member of the Finance Committee can only then be a member of other certain committees. So we had some people interested that had they been, had they been appointed, they would then have to resign from other committees in town. So it's kind of a unique one in that sense. So going into the weekend, we thought we had two people. This afternoon, we had a third submission come in. I, you know, certainly entertained the board's thoughts, Finance Committee's thoughts. My thought is now that we've got three people, we probably should now consider giving all three an opportunity to come and speak, where before it was only essentially two for two positions. So I know, Chairman, if you've got any thoughts or anybody in select board has some thoughts?
Well, I just, my first thought was, because the agenda was posted and there were already two, you know, interested, or three at the time when this was posted, and this one came in this afternoon, I don't know that that's, you know, was included on the agenda, if that's an open meeting law violation.
I don't think we put the names on.
Well, it was in the packet.
It was in the packet, which was pointed, posted later.
Did we have a deadline?
No, not that I'm aware of.
It would probably only be an open meeting violation if you did something tonight. You did something tonight and, I don't know if it would be then, but if you did something tonight, then you would be voting on a, an application. I don't think there's a requirement that the application be shared publicly though. So, I don't know.
Maybe I have an abundance of caution. Defer.
I'm just saying that the, you know, there were two applications that were included in the packets.
Really pointed if you defer it, then you've settled the issues there.
Right. But my concern is that we have town meeting coming up and, you know, we have three members on the Finance Committee. I think it's important that we, you know, have those seats filled for, you know, full complement for town meeting as well.
I don't disagree with you.
So I just, I'm just, you know, the timing and all of this and just the late submittal, that was the first, you know, thought that came, you know, came to me that because it wasn't in the packet when the packet went out.
Yeah. So we just, just got this afternoon.
Yeah, because I mean, we're also, we're doing warrant review and I believe Finance Committee will be doing their recommendations tonight anyways. New members wouldn't be able to be, the clerk is here. New members would not normally be sworn in immediately. I know you've got a lot of paperwork and things for everybody that gets sworn in. Mr. Chair, any thoughts?
We would, well, I would prefer the opportunity to, or afford, yeah, I guess the opportunity for the candidates to be interviewed. And I think we're not prepared to do that tonight.
All right. Yeah, this afternoon was a bit of a twist. Because our next meeting is not likely going to be until right before town meeting.
All right. So you're talking the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, next real meeting.
And honestly, if you're not going to be, that's a minimized situation, but if you're not going to, if you're not, if you're not, if you're not going to staff the Finance Committee up before town meeting, frankly, you have, you have for a real jurious period of time to be able to do, to go ahead and do that. You know, if that, if, if you look past the issue of town meeting, which I'm not saying is an issue, but if you look past the issue of town meeting, then you have, then after that, next time, Finance Committee will be brought in, I think it would be towards the fall.
Leah, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I don't see the rush to get people in for a town meeting. I mean, I, I'm okay interviewing, but I also don't see the rush because then we're just two people that are gonna be there that really haven't participated in any budget discussions or, I don't find it mandatory to put two people there for town meeting that, you know, haven't participated in the entire budget process till now.
Okay. I'm fine tabling this then until the next opportune moment, if everybody else is. Likely May twenty-second, we'll see how the agenda shakes out.
Yeah. Technically, that's what we're planning on.
Do apologize to those that did attend tonight that did apply.
That's helpful.
Any other thoughts? Just move forward. Okay. All right. So we'll table this tentatively till the twenty-second. Give us an opportunity to get everybody here. Do we want to put a deadline on people sending things in at this point?
Well, I don't know if you want to just close, close applications at this point. It's up to you. Whether you want to keep them for another week or two.
Because they don't want to do, get another one that, you know, two a block.
I would put a firm date on that point, yeah. I would.
I mean, I, I would be happy to leave it open, but not for long, just so that we can put a concrete date in place.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason we can't set a date, say, May fifth? What, I pick a date for a deadline? I mean?
Well, at least put more the posting period so we can all know what we're getting before it's posted. Avoid this.
Why not try to, you know, look at all the possible candidates?
Yeah, if you do it for, if you make the closing date for, for applications, say, as Larry's just, May fifth or something like that, then I'll be able to come back to the meeting on the eighth and say, here's the latest information, these are all the applications we have in.
Yep.
We'll be interviewing them on the twenty-second.
And if we do the fifth, that gives lots of time to give people a heads up that a meeting is coming and they can attend. All right.
That seems reasonable.
Okay.
All right. So that's what we'll do.
All right. A warrant review. Item three or four, I don't know where you got it.
So, um, everybody should have their little, little touch sheet. Start doing this for the fall town meeting, it seems to be useful. And we'll, and once we have all the information filled, we'll make a couple, we'll fill it in and send it out to everybody so everyone has it. Seems to work pretty well for fall, which was quite complicated.
Madam Moderator, you still with us?
Aye and aye.
All right. The talk ahead. Mr. Chair, are you guys going to be providing recommendations evening, this evening?
No.
That's okay. Are you gonna be doing recommendations this evening?
Yes, we will.
All right.
I make a recommendation, can we group the articles where we do not have a recommendation?
I think you certainly can. I think that's fine, if you've done that in the past. So anybody who hasn't watched one of these before, Town Bylaw does require the Finance Committee in Lakeville to make a recommendation for every article on the warrant. That can be recommend pass, recommend non-passage, or they have no recommendation at all. So that's how we do things here. So we will be going through the special and annual town meeting warrant together, discussing what the items are, and then allowing Finance Committee to make recommendations as they see fit. All right. Madam Moderator, do you want to take us through? Do you want me to take us through? It's up to you. Your meeting.
I think you can take us through.
Thanks. All right. So we will start with the special town meeting, Article One. I'll read what they are. Todd, I saw you came up. Will you be giving us another overview or only a few questions?
I can be your friend.
Careful. All right. Article one, the special town meeting, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents from free cash, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars from FI twenty-three, Freetown Lakeville Regional Schools operating assessment budget, seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents from Park Enterprise retained earnings, and one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents from landfill retained earnings for the following unpaid bills from prior fiscal years or take any action in relation thereto. All right. So, Todd, keep me honest, these are basically six unpaid bills that crossed the fiscal boundary or just came in a little late in the year?
Five crossed the boundary. One of the largest one was in dispute and with respect to the debt assessment for Bristol County.
Okay.
Agricultural schools. So that's been resolved to the point. And we did have savings on our other existing regional school assessments. So this is not a cut to the Freetown Lakeville. We actually have budgeted a number higher than what the final assessment for the region was.
Excellent. All right. Any questions from the select board or any comments on Article One? We've talked about these in the past. At least the two of you have.
Well, you're over here.
You're here. You're right over there. All right. Someone to make a move.
Yeah, no question. Ask Finn comment, any other questions at this point?
None of us want to.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
To approve Article One.
Of course, you already approved it.
Yeah.
You have to figure out what the Finance Committee's recommendation is going to be.
Oh, yeah. Well, can we take a vote till we?
So you basically want to recommend approval?
Oh, yeah. For Article One.
You have to say recommend.
Oh, recommend. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for Article One. Show more. And Member Georgia?
Second. Aye.
Aye.[1619.12] And Chair President Blanca, aye.
Moving to Article 2. Yes, sir.
Would it be helpful if, as we go along, determine if it's going to make, give an acre of motion as well at town meeting?
Okay, I'm gonna do those upfront.
Or if we do them later, it's fine.
Either way, I'm happy to do it unless somebody really wants to go Article 1.
All right, you're fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Day, is that Marianne doing?
No, it'll be Brian.
Uh, Brian.
Sorry, I didn't mean to answer.
I'll send it all out. Katie, I'll send it all out anyway. I'll send the.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Article 2, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the unused balances of the capital projects identified below the sum of $45,000 for the capital projects stated below and anything incidental or related thereto, including but not limited to the purchase and installation of furniture, equipment, and supplies, or take any other action in relation thereto. So these are unused capital project balances that will be closed or transferred. I'm just going to say as presented in the warrant article for a total of $45,000 and transfer the unused funds for the following FY23 capital projects. They will go to, so all of 45,000 will go to the following projects. First one, fire department thermal imaging and firefighter tracking. Item 2, fire department pump operations equipment, two items totaling $45,000. Any comments or questions?
I'll take that one if you want.
Finance Committee, any questions or comments for a recommendation?
No. I make a motion to recommend approval for Article 2.
You got a second?
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
Chair President Blanca, aye.
Very much. So we got Leah for making that motion. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer $28,000 from annual town meeting May 10th, 2021. Article 4, repair and paint tennis courts project to parks repairs and equipment, or take any other action in relation thereto. Questions or comments? Nope. Okay. Finance Committee?
No. Make a motion, recommend approval for Article 3.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
Chair President Blanca, aye.
Who would like to make that motion? Well, that's Park Mission, so we see, Chairman of the Park Mission?
Scott's right here.
Where, where do you think you go?
Not the chair anymore. Who's the chair? Uh, Melissa's the chair?
You can nominate people, they're not here to defend themselves.
We can ask Melissa.
Okay, that's good. All right, so moving on to the annual town meeting, there are only three items on the specialist here. We got 15 articles to go through for annual.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion for no recommendation on those.
Oh, you already have those prepared?
We do.
Okay. What are the numbers?
11, 12, 13, and 15.
11, 12, 13, 15.
Correct.
Okay, just to check. Okay, sir. Go ahead, and when we get to those, we'll just remind everybody that the recommendation was already made.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Two.
Make a motion to recommend no recommendation for Articles 11, 12, 13, and 15.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
And Chair President Blanca, aye.
Thank you very much. So we'll just read those back when we get to those articles.
If I can. Is this, I thought the Finance Committee and the moderator could, you know, clarify. I thought that there had to be some vote on it, whether it's to recommend or not to recommend. No. As long as the Finance Committee has voted to either recommend, not recommend, or make no recommendation, we've accepted that. And we've done that by precedent as well. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Article 1 is the big one. The one we'll get read line by line. To see if the town will vote to determine the salaries of all elected officials and to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to defray town expenses for the fiscal period July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, inclusive said sums to be allocated in accordance with the budget documented and to be presented at town meeting, and to make appropriations or take any other action relative thereto. All right. Ari gave us the small update earlier on what's happening in the budget, but that won't really change anything till later in the year. The state gets things settled. Were there any questions on the budget at this point that was recommended at the last meeting?
Uh, no, but I'm going to volunteer for numbers 2, 3, and 4, so if anyone else wants to take those.
Everybody's jumping ahead with their favorites here, okay.
Well, those are the ones I represent now, so it makes sense.
Marianne, would you like to do this one, or would you like me to take it for making a motion?
I can make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't we just, no, go ahead.
We'll make mine, Finance Committee read it out then, right? All right. It's part of the job. All right, Finance Committee, over to you for a recommendation.
I make a motion to recommend approval for Article 1. Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
And Chair President Blanca, aye.
Thank you very much. Article 2, which Leah has volunteered to give the motion for, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to operate the park department for the fiscal period July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, inclusive, and to make appropriation or take any other action relative thereto. Any questions or comments? Welcome to gallery? Nope? Okay. Finance Committee?
I make a motion to recommend approval for Article 2.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
And Chair President Blanca, aye.
Thank you. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to operate the landfill transfer station for the fiscal period July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, inclusive, and to make appropriation or take any other action relative thereto. Leah has offered to do this one as well. If there's no comments or questions, we hand it over to Finance.
Make a motion, recommend approval for Article 3. Member Georgia? I'm sorry, member Georgia?
I escalated quickly. Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
And Chair President Blanca, aye.
Article 4, also from the Select Board, stabilization fund. Oh, wait, capital budget, get ahead of yourself.
Capital budget.
That's what happens when you volunteer. All right. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, borrow or otherwise provide some of money for capital improvements and equipment, and all costs incidental or related thereto, and to authorize town officials to take such action and execute all documents as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote or take any action relative thereto. And I'm simply going to say as presented in the list there. See, there's that. If there's no questions or comments, pass it over to Finance Committee.
Make a motion, recommend approval for Article 4.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
Chair President Blanca, aye.
Shouldn't I just add that these were, just for anyone who may not know, we do have a capital expenditures committee, and these were all approved, I know we've mentioned it before, but these were approved by the capital expenditures committee and then recommended to the Select Board.
Excellent point. Okay, Article 5. This is Select Board, I'll volunteer to do this one. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purposes of adding to the stabilization fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, or take any action relative thereto. No questions, comments? Finance Committee?
Make a motion, recommend approval for Article 5.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
Chair President Blanca, aye.
Thank you. Article 6. Any volunteers to make the motion?
Article 6.
Thank you, right? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of adding to the other post-employment benefits trust, otherwise known as OPE, or take any action relative thereto. Questions, all right? Finance Committee?
Make a motion, recommend approval, Article 6.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
Chair President Blanca, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Article 7, CPA reserves. Has anybody volunteered to present this?
Probably the Chair of CPC.
Okay. I'm looking in the corner.
Nancy, correct?
Nancy.
Yeah.
Put Nancy's name down, and she can fight out of it. Okay, here we go. 7, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from the community preservation fund annual revenues and amounts recommended by the community preservation committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2024 as shown below, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. So there will be appropriations for community administrative expenses, historic resource reserves, community housing reserve, open space reserve, and budget reserve. And those would be, Todd, the five legally required buckets for those funds, is that correct?
Yes, the fifth one is optional, but we're including it so that the committee has an opportunity during the fiscal year to come back to a future town meeting and use this for a project or an acquisition during the year.
Excellent.
If we don't do that, it would just close to equity and not be available for another fiscal year.
All right, I'm gonna give them a head start then.
Yep.
Nice. Or take any other action relative thereto, down at the bottom. Any other questions on this item at this time? Nicely see this money going aside finally. Finance Committee?
Make a motion, recommend approval for Article 7.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant? Chair President Blanca, aye.
Article 8, do we expect Mr. Polanski to speak, make this motion, or we have to make?
I believe so.
Okay.
Is that right? Katie, he asked for permission to speak, correct?
He can, although I think because in his role is serving the town, he doesn't really, we don't need to officially do it, but we always do.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Okay, so. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to approve the $500,000 indebtedness authorized by the Regional School District Committee of the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School District to pay cost of a feasibility study relating to the possible renovation and/or construction of a district high school located at 476 North Ave, Rochester, Massachusetts, including all costs incidental and related thereto. The total amount appropriated by the district for this purpose is $1 million, which will be reduced to the extent of any grants received by the district from Massachusetts School Building Authority or take any action relative thereto. One quick comment, and Ari and everybody, make sure I say this right. Because this is the district taking on debt, they have to put the whole amount in the article, but then it will be divvied up amongst all the member towns, so Lakeville's share is not $500,000, it's what is, whatever the agreement comes to.
I have asked the district to give us that number. They're reluctant to give us the actual number at this point based on the enrollment and so on, so. And we know, they're prepared to come and talk about that. The, Mr. Chairman, so Todd and I just had a thought. Would it be appropriate to have Aaron Polanski speak, or would you like to have, we talked about Marshall, since he's the?
Either, either way.
He's elected.
I mean, we could.
Whoever presents, whoever makes the motion has the first right to speak, so it should be determined who is going to make this motion, because I will be asking them to speak to it.
Yeah, I'll be on that, that's fine.
So we'll ask those individuals, see who'd like to. Make a note. Okay, if there's no questions, Finance Committee?
Make a motion, recommend approval for Article 8.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
Chair President Blanca, aye.
Thank you. Article 9, septic management program. Proposed by the Board of Health, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds and/or borrow a sum of money for purposes of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects, repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to disagreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners for repayment of project and financing costs by such property owners, including without limitation, the payment of all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of Massachusetts General Law, and to meet with the appropriation with treasurer. With the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow such sum or sums of money under General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority, which amount may be borrowed through Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust Community Septic Management Program offered through the Clean Water Trust or otherwise. And further, to authorize the Select Board to take any other action necessary to carry out this project or take any action relative thereto. So we think Chair of Board of Health will be doing that?
Yes, I will.
Congratulations, thank you, sir. All right. Are there any questions on this program? No? Finance Committee?
Make a motion, recommend approval for Article 9.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
Chair President Blanca, aye.
Thank you. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to change for each written demand issued by the tax collector a fee of $20 to be added and collected as part of the tax as authorized by Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 15, effective as of July 1, 2023, or take any action relative thereto. Do you believe this is an increase from $15 to $20?
Correct.
It hasn't been updated in decades?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You said to, will vote to change, but it's vote to charge.
Thank you for the correction. Vote to charge, not vote to change. Any questions on this? Finance Committee?
Make a motion, recommend approval for Article 10.
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
Chair President Blanca, aye.
Who do you want to have, we've got?
Yeah. Will she be present?
Looking to, she should be present. She's not a town resident, so I wanted to defer to you.
I mean, we could, if she would like to, it's fine too, either way. If she's.
Okay, I'll put her down.
I think she should be there, in case people have questions.
She'll definitely be there, I just don't know whether she.
She's come to every meeting since she's been here.
Yeah, I just don't know whether you wanted her to make the motion, that's all.
Do you have her in your list of people that speak, Katie? Erica?
Make sure I get it. Lilian usually gives me a list of anybody unexpected.
Perfect. Okay. Article 11. Madam Clerk, will you be presenting this item, or?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much. Town Moderator?
Mr. Day?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to just comment on this one. I will be recusing myself for this one. I've asked Mr. Oral to step in as a deputy moderator to moderate this particular article. While it does not affect me, because it would not come into effect if it was passed until next year, I just want to make sure that we have all semblances, no conflict of interest.
All right, thank you for that. So Article 11 is, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 2, Section 8 of the town's general bylaws, moderator, to increase the moderator's term from one year to three years as shown below, with additions in bold and deletions in strike through. Said change to take effect for the 2024 annual town election, or take any other action relative thereto. So the new text would be, moderator, Section 8, the moderator shall be elected at the annual town meeting on the official ballot for a term of three years, proposed by the town clerk. Assuming there's no questions, so the Finance Committee has already said that they have, has already voted no recommendation on this article.
Annual town election? Or annual town meeting?
Oh, good catch.
That should be election. Should it, Lilian?
I even, I read that, I didn't even notice.
So if you look at the bylaw, the bylaw actually says, I believe, annual town meeting, and so that should also be corrected if we're going to do that. Oh, okay.
Is that part of the codification project? Just throw it in there.
In which case that should be bolded and struck through, so that we're showing that we're correcting it.
Is that worthy of somebody making an amendment from the floor, or is that?
I believe so. I believe it should be amended. Maybe someone on the Select Board can make a motion to amend that, just so that it's all done correctly.
Good catch, right? So that would be eating to election. Okay, so. Lilian will present this. Finance Committee already voted no recommendation. Moving on to Article 12. This is also from the town clerk. I'm gonna assume that she will present 12 and 13. To see if the town shall accept the renumbering and revision of the various general bylaws of the town from their original numbering, or their numbering in the general bylaws as amended through November 14, 2022, special town meeting, to the numbering of codification arrangements, sequence, and captions, and the comprehensive revisions to the text of the general bylaws and set forth in the final draft of the code for the town of Lakeville dated March 2023, a copy of which is on file at the office of the town clerk and on the town's website, lakevillemass.org, said codification having been done under the direction of the Select Board and said code being a compilation and comprehensive revision of the present general bylaws of the town. All bylaws of a general and permanent nature as amended, here to enforce and not included in the code shall be repealed, except that such repeal shall not affect any suit or proceeding pending as a result of an existing law, and such repeal shall not apply to or affect And such repeal shall not apply to or affect any bylaw, order, or article here to adopted accepting or adopting the provisions of any statute of the common law. These bylaws shall be referred to as the General and Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, or take any action relative thereto. And you guys have already voted no recommendation from the Finance Committee. So move on to thirteen.
Um, could I just state that, um, I think they're already posted, right, Ari, the updated versions?
Mm-hmm, and they're available in public. Um, we recorded a video, um, which I was literally...
Can I make a correction? They're not corrected until town meeting.
Right, the proposed changes.
Yeah, but the codification documents are.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, what would be the new ones are available for review, but the existing ones are in effect until whatever shakes out.
I just, you know, typically when folks come to town meeting, they get everything. I just don't know what the intent is, if we're printing it out for everyone, or?
This one's huge.
It would be hundreds of pages.
So I just don't want folks to say that, you know, I can't look at it because it's not included. So we really need to stress that.
So we've been doing a couple of things in terms of outreach. We have, we've posted notices on the website a couple times. Also, we ran a couple times on Facebook. I'll do it again a few more times. Um, Lily and I recorded a, uh, a video on Friday that we did this week, talk about, you know, what's the new codification, what it's all about, where they can find the information, and so on, and posted on Facebook as well. Um, it is challenging, because it is like that thick. So it's not like we can just hand everybody a copy.
Is the Wi-Fi in the high school private? I think it is, isn't it?
I think so. Those can call it being very, you know.
But if anybody does actually want a hard copy, request it where?
Uh, we have hard copies sitting at the library right now, in the town hall.
So there's some at the library, some at town hall.
Right, we just, I mean, it would be a board call, how you want to handle that. What do you want to, because that's a lot of copies.
I mean, can we do it at the library, like you would take out any other book? You can take it for a night and bring it back or something. It's like...
Make their own modifications and bring it back?
Well, so that way they could see it, at least.
It's on the website.
Yeah.
The red line proposal.
All right, so the red line proposal's on the website. You've got videos coming. There's already hard copies out there.
Right.
Somebody really wants their own.
I mean, this is a recodification of every bylaw. Well, not every one was changed, but...
Especially a codification?
Yeah, a codification. It was, everyone was looked at, so.
Okay. Moving on to thirteen, same but different. Article thirteen, Finance Committee has already voted that they have no recommendation on Article thirteen. To see if the town shall accept the renumbering and revision of the zoning bylaw of the town from its original numbering as amended through the November fourteenth, twenty-second, November fourteenth, 2022, special town meeting, to the numbering or codification arrangement, sequence, and captions of the comprehensive revisions of the text of the zoning bylaw as set forth in the final draft of the code of the town of Lakeville dated March twenty twenty-three, a copy of which is on file at the Office of the Town Clerk and on the town's website, www.lakvillemass.org. Said codification of the zoning bylaw has been done under the direction of the planning board and being a compilation and comprehensive revision of the present zoning bylaw, including amendments thereto. All zoning bylaws as amended, here four-two and four shall be repealed, except that such repeal shall not affect any suit or proceeding pending as a result of an existing law. The zoning bylaw shall be codified as Chapter two seventy of the General and Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, or take any other action relative thereto. Quick question, Mike. The warrant says proposed by the planning board, but the cheat sheet says town clerk. So which do we want?
You're right, um, zoning bylaw, well, that's a good point. It's brought to us by the clerk, but it's not really... It was reviewed by the planning board. I guess they had to prove it. Yeah.
You get to pick. Clerk is offered to do that one. Um, if I didn't already say it, Finance Committee already voted no recommendation. Moving to Article fourteen, if there's no questions. This is a long one, so I'll just read the opening, then as in the warrant. Uh, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to petition the General Court for special legislation to provide for recall of officials elected solely by the voters of Lakeville, and further to authorize the General Court to make changes of form only to such legislation unless approved by the select board prior to enactment, and further to authorize the board to approve such changes as are within the public purposes of this petition or take any other action relative thereto. Subject to the above stated rights of the General Court and the select board to make certain changes, the proposed special legislation shall include the following provisions relative to recall of elected town officials. And at this point, I'll say as presented in the warrant, as it's quite long. Tracy, we had any communication with the petitioner? Will they be presenting?
I have emailed her a couple of times, and I've received no response.
What is?
So we don't know who is making this?
We know who the petitioner is.
We know who the petitioner is, but I haven't had any response to my emails.
Okay.
Well, we might have a phone number somewhere, right?
I don't.
I don't think submission's divided. Probably, um, just look at the official mail. We can get the number.
Okay.
So we'll work on getting in contact with the petitioner. Um, any questions or comments from the select board on this one first? No? Okay. Finance Committee?
Make a motion to not approve Article fourteen? Recommend not approval for Article fourteen?
Second.
Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
K. President Plonker?
Aye.
Okay, Finance Committee has voted to not recommend passage of Article fourteen, petition recall of elected officials. We'll have the opportunity to make a statement why, if you so wish. And moving to Article fifteen. Um, Tracy, same question. Petitioner in contact, or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I sent him a email, and he responded that he was...
Okay, and does Katie have his, his name? Do you know if Katie has his name?
Um, it's Daniel Queen.
Okay. All right. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw relative to business uses as follows. Amend Section four-one, Table of Uses Regulations, subsection four-one-two, Business Usage, add new language as follows. Retail, office, or service business, minimum of fifteen hundred square feet, with up to seven thousand square feet of associated storage and wholesale distribution, per special permit by the zoning board of appeals.
Just for reference, Mr. Chairman, the planning board voted last week, Mark?
Yes, that's correct.
To, to recommend, to recommend against the, the...
Right, what it gets.
Against, too.
Thank you. Finance Committee has already voted no recommendation on this article, and that is the final article of the annual town meeting. So, thank you, sir, ma'am, sir, for going through all those with us. Chairman, if you don't have any other business this evening, feel free to close if you'd like.
You do not make a motion to close the Finance Committee? Member Georgia?
Aye.
Member Constant?
Aye.
K. President Plonker?
Aye.
All right, thank you much for helping tonight.
Can I just ask a couple of questions before we're completely done with this?
Uh, sure. Do you need them to hang around, or?
Um, well, it may pertain to them, so. It's mostly about the budget books.
Yeah.
Um, are they gonna be similar in nature?
They're gonna be identical. We're gonna, so we're gonna do the same thing we did last year.
Okay.
We'll have copies for all of you.
Yeah.
This week.
Yep.
Sorry, it's been posted online.
Okay.
And, um, and we'll have, um, the, uh, we'll have copies available. You know, enough for everybody to, I mean, enough copies to reference, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we'll have them a few days before the meeting?
Oh, more than that.
Okay.
Get them this week.
Yeah, so we're gonna start working on them on Wednesday.
Mr. Day?
Yes, ma'am.
I have one question. Um, just one point of, um, information for Mr. Plonker.
Okay.
Uh, we have over the last three years had the Chair of the Finance Committee read that budget. Is Mr. Plonker still there?
He's grimacing right now.
So if he wants to reach out to me about the logistics of that, um, I'd be happy to talk to him.
Thank you. I will do that. Thank you.
All right, uh, were there any other questions, Leah?
Um, no, that was pretty much it.
Uh, are there any other questions on the articles?
Nope, I just hope that, uh, we have a quorum of at least a hundred people. That's our quorum, uh, for, for May eighth. It looks like the first time I've ever seen it from a special election, um, and held in the fall, that had twenty-something articles versus an annual town meeting with a special town meeting prior with fifteen. So, uh, I think it would probably be a relatively condensed evening, maybe a couple of hours, um, that hopefully we can get some, some people there so we can conduct the business that we need to conduct to move on to our next fiscal, fiscal year.
I second that statement.
All right, let's hope for a good turnout. Let's see, from the audience, we probably should go...
Thank you. We'll see you on the...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. See you soon. Um, Ari, do you want to go to ARPA or CPC first?
I'm, I'm here till the end. Your turn, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm giving you the option then. Player's choice.
Why don't you CPC, because Mark, Mark does not need to be here for, for, and we have Mike and, and Scott, so why don't we do, um, um, I don't know. Probably do ARPA, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Happy?
Article seven, Ari?
I hear someone's, I hear someone's on jet lag here, so.
Where are you going?
Uh, ARPA update.
Number, uh, seven. Okay. Um, this is a combination, ARPA update and, um, and, and request for, for new projects as well. As the board knows, and for the public, ARPA consists of two streams of funding. One is the direct funding that the town receives from Treasury Department, US Treasury. Uh, the second is the funding provided to Plymouth County, which in turn allocates a portion of the revenue that we receive to cities and towns. Um, in terms of direct funding, we received two tranches of ARPA funding directly from the US Treasury. That's our total allocation. It's a $1,210,073. Of that amount, the select board has designated $14,800 for feasibility study on water services to town facilities. A hundred thousand is a set aside for COVID response. Twenty thousand for the outdoor stage cover. Forty-four thousand, $785 for the Ted Williams Camp Tennis Course Project. Um, there's also, as you recall, an approval for $170,000 for the Gamash Playground, however, we subsequently found out that the county would be able to cover that. Um, so the total unobligated balance is currently $1,030,488. There is the revenue replacement exemption, which allows any locality with up to $10 million in revenue to just carve that out and use it in a relatively broad way. So there's a lot of flexibility in how you can use that money, basically for capital. Um, the, um, uh, select board has previously indicated a desire to apply that funding towards community capital projects in addition to the COVID response. Um, one thing that's not funded at this point, which we will come back to at some point in the near future, is $83,800 estimated for the irrigation wells at the police station's historic library. That was part of the original water study, but the county determined those were ineligible. In terms of Plymouth County funding, the, um, Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, and Commissioner Valenzola, Jared Valenzola, um, addressed this select board on January ninth. The state of the town would be eligible for as much as $2,077,294 in county COVID funding, uh, subject to approval regarding project eligibility. A portion of that is being carved out as the revenue replacement piece, our share of the $10 million on their side. Um, that's $443,000. Um, the town has requested $353,000 of that already um, for the historic town hall restroom improvements and the Gamash Playground. In addition, we've requested $332,800 for water projects, uh, which was the follow-on to that study. Um, the eligible uses are kind of limited. Um, and it's a, it's a, if you don't have, if you're not a town with utilities and things like that, um, or, um, some of the other, uh, um, categories that qualify, it's not really, it's kind of difficult to find projects to fund with that, to, to, to fund with that. However, um, the, the, the categories are water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers, addressing negative economic impacts, which is like, which is delivering funding to impacted workers and businesses, and supporting the public health response, um, responding to COVID-19 issues. That's one that we have some opportunity, which I'll talk about in a moment. Um, however, overall going forward, it would be advisable for the select board to discuss which priorities would be targeted, should be targeted within the range of eligible uses. Um, I've had a couple of conversations with the county since, um, uh, the, uh, since the treasurer addressed us. And, um, one area that they suggested, which we dove into a little bit, was the idea of funding, um, rescue services, or rescue equipment, um, for, with, with the county's share. And they, the, uh, the county consultant expressed a great deal of, of receptiveness to the idea of, um, purchasing an ambulance or something along those lines. As you know, we have an ambulance in CIP for next, for twenty-five, so this would supplant that. Um, and in addition, we have the opportunity to buy a number of bits of equipment that we would normally buy in a normal ambulance replacement, because we try to keep it lean. In this case, we have some opportunity to buy some extra equipment as well, which Chief O'Brien could talk about. So one of the suggestions I would have is, um, a, a, a proposal that Chief O'Brien put together, which I already ran by, I took a little bit of running by their consultant, just to see if this was something that qualified, that would tend to qualify, that they were considered to be, should discussion COVID impact and so on. And they were very pleased by the application. Um, so the application's for $572,000. Um, there's a number of additional items added on there. Um, motorized stretchers, different kinds of equipment, and so on.
Essentially, we went, uh, Mr. Chair, we went from bumper to bumper, and we priced out all the equipment that I would take to field in the ambulance. So normally, we would, uh, supply for grants, supply for capital, programs to, uh, replace all these items. And since it's qualified and it's used as related to COVID response, we're gonna blow the same, it's up to, you know, a complete unit to roll out for Lakeville.
This would really be kind of a unique opportunity for us. It would actually help us a lot as far as affordability of the CIP down the line as well.
That, and I know we've got some uncertainties with the schools next year as well, so.
Well, there's a lot of reasons.
Anything we can free up is nice.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, if, um, even if we bought a, an ambulance, like we normally buy it, it'll be three seventy-five, four hundred thousand dollars. You know, we usually do, do those on a three-year lease. You can do the math. So we're, we're basically eliminating the need for $130,000, $140,000 a year in, in lease purchase that we normally have. So that, that'd be a really positive benefit to the town, I think. Um, something that we frankly need to do anyway at some point, so.
I, I, I also, Mr. Chair, think that at least one or two other communities were able to buy ambulances with their CARES money, but for whatever reason, the rest of us never made that opportunity, let's just say. So I think we need to take advantage of.
When Ari came to me with this opportunity, it's, it was easy to connect the connection to COVID, to the need for new ambulances.
I would say she did a very good job of putting that all together, if you saw any applications.
I was just about to comment and thank the chief and whoever else helped put that information together, that if you go and look at our packet that you can download online, you can see that their transport miles go from 11,520,20 all the way to 17,420,21. I mean, that's a lot of extra miles on, a lot of, you know, equipment that takes hard miles to begin with.
It's kind of a good, good story. Our, our provider's really advocating for patients, so we have hospital capacity issues. So they're very aware where the hospitals are, and they're willing to drive an extra ten miles for the benefit of a patient. And that's, that's related to COVID directly. So that's why we see that miles challenge.
So the response, they couldn't prom, you know, the consultant couldn't promise anything, ask anything, because it was just initial review. Her feeling was that it was a very strong application. And, um, considering the challenges I've had getting water projects through her, that, that means a lot. So, um, so that's one. Um, the, the other, uh, project that we're looking at is the North Fields, which everyone knows about. I'm sorry.[1712.64] I'm sorry.
I just, a couple other questions for the chief, if that's all right. And Lorraine, if you've got any questions on the ambulance as well?
Okay.
All right, I was gonna ask, since you can kind of go, like I said, bumper to bumper and outfit, a whole, potentially outfit, a whole new ambulance, does this leave you in a position where one ambulance would be outfitted any differently than the others? Or can your crew get into any of them, know, I've got everything I need no matter which unit I hop into?
So the only thing that would be different would be a motorized mechanized stair chair. The rest of it would be uniform. We kind of strive for that.
Okay. Is that something we can look into some way? Just so that you guys don't have to worry about what ambulance you're getting into?
So you mean like an additional mechanized stretcher?
What's taken to do is say no.
Yeah, so a $15,000 hit.
Yeah, what's taken to do is say no.
All right.
I'll take it.
Just in the unfortunate chance that this does come back to decline if we're to vote it forward tonight, what is the timeline on these funds? And do we have anything else in mind?
The end of '25.
'25, okay.
So we have a couple of other ideas that we have. Frankly, for the county money, there's not much else.
All right.
We were supposed to be thinking.
Yeah. The, yeah, there are some things that we might be able to do. I think the COVID response and public safety response is probably the best bet we have because we don't run town water and town sewer. And, you know, which is one of the reasons why getting the water project that we put together for the town was a bit of a lift. But we're there, we've gotten there, which is, I'm very pleased by. So if this gets approved, even if this does get approved, we're still only using about $1 million of our $2 million.
All right. All right.
I'm good.
Okay. I have no other ambulance questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over the board there.
That's all right.
The second project is the North Fields project. You're familiar with this. This is a, this is a pair of fields that were first constructed in 2019, right?
Oh, oh, okay.
And just north of here a bit, Bedford Street. The fields are very nice fields, but there's, but there are no amenities associated with them. There's no, there isn't really effective parking, there's access a little bit tough, there's no bathroom facilities, anything like that. So I spoke with, I've had a number of conversations, mainly with Mike, but also with Scott as well, about the idea of using some ARPA money, it would be the town's ARPA money, because this wouldn't be signed with the county, it would be the town's, toward a project to make that amenity usable. So over some period of time, they put something together. Mike, I'm gonna let you give an overview of it real quick, what you talked about a little bit.
Well, sure. First of all, I'd like to thank the select board for all their support, the parks projects this year, tennis courts, the playground. And this is a very, very important project to us. Those fields have been sitting there unused for three years. I wish there was a way to gain access there a little cheaper, but Scott and I have spent a lot of time with Frank, and people who do grading and construction, and it needs a lot of work. It's unsafe down there right now. There are telephone poles down there with wires sticking up, and there's Creosel in there, so it's really unsafe. We still have our guy Ryan, who works for Frank, taking care of the fields. That's why they're in great shape. But our soccer fields are getting beat up. I mean, that's the most used fields we have. So we can't afford to rest them because we have a very important group to play there. And we're turning away other groups because we don't have the space to put them. The idea is to move the soccer group over to the North Fields, and then heal some of the other fields, and then start getting other groups to come in. So it's going to help raise our revenue, because he knows we're an enterprise fund with a zero-based budget. So, you know, it's important for us to do this without incurring more costs out of our budget. So Scott worked a lot with the contractors, and if you want to just give an update where we are in our meeting with Frank about his ideas.
Sure. We had two of the three contractors get back to us with various pricing to go with the crushed gravel, which is what Frank felt was a better base, because the water would dissipate through it, versus using the asphalt millings, which would harden up and, you know, not disperse through. So we got a couple of prices on that to help us build this estimate. And then one other thing we went with was to carve out an area of like 100 by 100 in the middle of the fields, well, not in the middle, but in the corner of the fields, and create, you know, a grass area for people to congregate in the middle of the fields, put the bathrooms there, some picnic tables, some grass, and bring the water that we have, because both fields are irrigated, and bring the water across so that we can keep it green and keep it nice, and possibly a commissary down the road. We also had a local fence contractor give us two different estimates, one for a black fencing, and the other one with a stainless, not stainless steel fencing. But it's the silver fencing. He also gave me his determination on how he priced it, so that should we put this out to bid, we would have a very good uniform base to bid on, you know, so that everybody's bidding the same thing. Because he said, right off the bat, he said, there's three different types of fencing, you know? So A is a lot cheaper than C, and this way, everybody's bidding on the same project, whatever we decide to go with. And then sat down with Frank, and we finished off the estimate with estimated amounts to remove the telephone poles that are along. They were put there to protect the fields back when Mike Vickery was working, of course. He and Mike Nolan got them put along the field so that no one would drive on it. Brand-new field, that was the last time we wanted somebody out there doing donuts. Didn't realize how bad the poles really were until after. So that's part of our estimate, is to remove them from away from the field and put fencing all along the field. Similar to what we have on the existing soccer fields to contain it, you know? Helps keeping the ball in and people running out into the street and what you have. And that's about it with our estimated total being approximately.
Just, you know, there's two parking lots, there's a lower and an upper one. There's no really good access to get to these fields, so that's going to get done. And then Frank's going to take care of doing some clearing there, because anyone pulling out of there is going to be, you know, very hard to see. So we just spent a lot of time with Frank. He was, he kind of put his rubber stamp on it and said, hopefully, you know, we can get the money for it, because it's just sitting there, and if we don't do anything, we'll just, you know, turn it to sheep field and try to do something. But I think it's important as far as the town goes, that we can do more things with leagues and for people to use it.
So this would be the second, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
This would be the second ARPA project at the parks that the board has funded. Third, actually, if you count the tennis courts. The, you still have, if you approve this, you still have about $880,000 left in the town direct funding, which you can use for various things. There are a number of other concepts and ideas that we're banding around right now. We've talked, I've talked about them with the Parks Department. So it's a bandwidth question, because this is going to be a fairly complex procurement. It's a big, it's a fairly sizable project with, either we're gonna, either we'll, you know, we're having this conversation, we either have to bid out as a single project through an RFP, or RFQ, or something along those lines, or bid out as several good-sized projects. Either way, it's a fairly complex procurement. So, or, you know, perhaps we could use our OPM to help out, something like that, I don't know. I haven't really talked it through too much yet, but I want to, I think this is kind of, we're kind of gradually increasing our proof of consensus to go along versus Gamash Playground, which is somewhat straightforward. Then now this one, you know, and if we do something like Clear Pond or something like that, that'll be probably, it's going to be more complex than this.
Yeah.
So I think it's a, you know, it's a good progression. I'll be quiet now.
Can we build signage into this proposal too? Because I don't know that.
What kind of signage would you like?
Well, for you, to let people know that this is where it is.
Oh, yeah, sure.
From the street, I'm just trying to, I mean, you did such a great job with, you know, the vision of what we wanted to put over there, and I think it's, you know, pretty well thought out, but we need to kind of let people know where it is. So I don't know if that's something that could be built into this as well.
Couldn't add a few more thousand if you wanted to?
I'm just, I mean, I know it's a project that, didn't we have an eagle project? Do that sign out here?
Yes, this is where we have.
Okay. So, I mean, just another thought too.
No, I think it's an excellent idea, and, you know, we're not quite sure, you know, some of this is guestimates as far as debris collection, so there is a little movement, but if there isn't, you know, we don't really have the money in our budget to do some signs, but if you would like to add a few more thousand, we'll gladly take it. I think it's a great idea, because we'll need it for the interest coming in, and so people will know about it.
Because you're looking to, I mean, as soon as this is funded and we identify who's going to be doing the work, you're looking to be pretty aggressive in getting this project done.
Yeah.
September, the unit by September.
People use it.
So just, or just, you know, however the board wants to entertain it, I just think that we need to be aware that we need signage there.
Great idea.
Yeah?
I'd just really like to see them get done. And I think that's a great idea to add some extra money in for signage, because even the Boy Scout sign, which is a terrific sign, it's a great sign, he, the Boy Scout, he still had to do all that fundraising, so it was sort of time, it took time for him to do the fundraising. So even if we had someone willing to do, you know, that, and that was a pretty ambitious project.
It was huge.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Because he's doing other things, school and everything.
Right. But we would be relying on that person's ability to fundraise how quickly, so I would just assume that the signage done.
And currently, we don't have anyone on the horizon looking for a Boy Scout project nor is it possible. I'm just saying, we had one that was done last fall. That redid the fitness trail, the John DeCalle Fitness Trail.
Did a great job.
Did a great job. I mean, if you haven't had a chance to walk out there and see it, I mean, all the stations are nice and clean and painted, and it looks good, did a good job.
Yeah, but, I mean, otherwise, it would just really be nice to see those finished and be able to use them, so.
Yes, it would.
Yep.
I've got a number of comments on this, I hope all positive. First of all, it's great to see this coming forward, because I've had a number of people say, when the heck are those fields going to be available? We can't rest the old fields. I think under 12, they said, is like getting all undulated, and they want to see it level. I think Ari, at a former meeting, you said something like, this is a generational opportunity here.
Yes.
And when, when talking about Clear Pond, I think.
Yeah.
I, I think you guys have sold yourselves almost short and should be looking at more. I mean, soccer is so important right now, you could bring, like you said, bringing in more revenue. I mean, I'd say like, maybe this is phase one, but is there a phase two we should be looking at to, including in phase one at least, ensuring that if you're considering concession stand, all the utility work be done upfront, so that you're not tearing up parking lots or tearing up a field to get it in later? Even if you don't put the stand in now, just have the water, have the gas, whatever you need.
Right, and, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
But the electric and the water is on the southeast fence side of the field, it's just going to come across. And that was part of, bringing water over was part of one of the.
Gotcha, so I'm looking at the diagram.
But the electric is something we were talking about it today, that even if we can get it brought across to that area, you know, and then get it finished off when we, because we can't, technically can't build a building. We're not allowed to.
Is it a lean to if it has three sides?
Well, if it has wheels on it, it's not a building. That's why we have the bathroom that has wheels on it.
Food truck central? I mean, electricity leans into the next thing. We don't have any light at soccer fields, do we?
No, but they don't really play.
Well, you can't play in the fall when there's no sun.
Is a, believe me, just ask my parents when I coached, and the lights came on in the car, you know, to finish that last 15 minutes of an hour of soccer practice.
Yep.
Fall gets very difficult.
It's not really in our purview right now, but, you know, that's something we want to do, because we have so much to do with Clear Pond and stuff, but if you're willing to.
Well, I'm only one person. You know, utilities, including internet, because I'm sure you guys are going to want to take credit cards at a concession stand someday, hopefully, get rid of cash. Scoreboards, bleachers, security gates, because it's kind of an off little area where no one can really see at night once people leave the area.
All cameras we want to do.
Yeah, perfect. You know, maybe you duplicate the Gamash effort and put another playground over there, so that parents, I mean, it's pretty far away. Is all the land in between here and, I'll call it Ted Williams proper, also yours?
Yeah, just trails.
Right, so I don't know if it's hard to see from the overhead, but if there's a trail that connects those areas now or not, it's a long hike.
It's a road. It's like a dirt road.
That's why there's a road that comes in, that's why we're trying to.
But you can't drive the, you know.
But a parent's probably not hiking from the parking lot to Gamash Playground with the little ones.
No, no, and I mean, you know, it was something we looked at, but even for a small, you know, little jungle gym playground, you know, you're looking $45,000, $50,000. And at this point, we just really want to get these, this parking lot, so that we can use these fields.
Which would be great. That's why I'm saying maybe it's another phase you present to us, or you throw it all in there and you shoot down parts of it. But if you don't ask, you don't know.
Correct.
I agree. Thank you for that.
I don't know if my colleagues have any thoughts on that, or if I'm shooting for the stars too far, but I'd really just like to see it done and done well. Not just operational, but really do it up.
As long as the infrastructure's set up, you know, for future expansion, I think it's great.
I mean, Ted Williams has been the center of activities for many, many years, but it's starting to. Show it's where.
Sure.
And, you know, as the cross gets bigger and everything, we have to turn away these groups.
Yeah, I mean, the more we can help you guys generate revenue, the better off, you know, things would be, especially if you, like you said, open up to all the things that you haven't been able to do. You know, is it lacrosse? Is it field hockey, which I think is on the plan here?
Yeah.
That'd be great. I don't know if there's any opportunity with MG&E here to look at, if there's any partnerships there that can be done for lighting and such, but I just want to throw it out there, I would be super supportive of seeing this thing actually be a world-class soccer facility. People have been waiting for it, so.
So where's the, from what I understand from where, are you willing to add more money in for the signs?
I just brought it up as discussion.
Well, I would be willing for this, right, what's in front of us, to add some more money for the signs. It's kind of hard to say how much, and I don't want to delay this too much.
I mean, if you tweak it up to, say, 120, then well, if there's, if there's extra, well, it's not going, the money's not going anywhere.
Right, right.
So, you know, I think that's fine. Make sure, we can just make sure, we just go put the end, we'll make sure that's signed.
Yeah, because you're definitely going to need a sign on the street at least.
Do you have any recent examples of sign work we've done, we can draw from?
Over here at the Old Town Hall.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't much, a hundred bucks.
All right.
We had a sign done on the backside a couple of years ago. That was 2,500, I believe.
Okay.
It's not lit, it's not lit, but it's a nice two-sided sign.
Oh, the one on Priest Street there?
So I figured 5,000 would give a little room in the project, and also allow the possibility of, you know, signage in several places.
Right, that was pre-COVID.
It might be tough to get it lit right now, because we have our gas and electric, but, you know.
I'm just stating that it was not, it's not, it's not lit. And it was pre-COVID, so right there, the price.
Right, but the one, yeah, but the one on Bedford Street would be nice if it was lit.
It would be. It would be, and the pole across the street has power, and the conduits are there.
Yep.
When they, when they did that, when they put that island in, back Dick Vickett, Danny Hopkins, Darbernia, when they were on the board, there's a conduit for power.
Based on prior experience, what we've seen, I would say, lighting that field as well, it's probably, you're probably doubling the project.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to ask you for turf.
So the board will need to approve these applications for us to be able to.
We're doing that tonight, though, right?
I hope so.
I think so.
All right.
Do they?
It's been, Scott and I have spent weeks.
Yeah, do we, we need to do them separately?
Two individually, because one's at the county, one's at the county.
All right.
So, did they have any other?
Any other comments?
Okay. All right, well, I'd like to make a motion that we utilize ARPA funding for the purchase of an ambulance.
Apply to Plymouth County.
Okay, yes.
For ARPA funding, to utilize ARPA funding for the purchase of an ambulance that's laid out in the, as described, you know.
What he said?
Okay, sorry, let's see, utilize, my suggestion would be to move to apply to, the town apply to Plymouth County for allocation of ARPA funding in the amount of $572,410 to fund a replacement ambulance and associated equipment.
Can you so move what he said? Yes. Okay. Well, yeah, that was actually my words, out of his mouth, so.
There you go. Do we need to wait for the clicking to stop? There you go. Do we need to wait for the clicking to stop? That was a long one.
Yeah.
Ari gets excited when he talks the numbers. He talks really fast.
Sorry.
He does.
All right. So Lorraine made that motion and I will second. Yes?
I believe that is where we're at.
Okay.
Member Carbone?
Carbone, aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
Hey, aye. unanimous. Thank you, Ari and everybody else chief for putting that together.
The fields would be, um.
Our own ARPA.
Right. A, a sign to designate up to X, 115, 120, whatever.
Hundred and twenty.
Thousand dollars in town ARPA funding for the, uh, North Fields Improvement Project.
Yep. My words.
Is that a so move? Do you have a second?
I have a second. Yes.
Member Carbone?
Carbone, aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
Hey, aye. unanimous. Thank you very much, parks.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support.
I personally love a phase two and I really hope Ari keeps working with the commission about a package for Clear Pond. I think that came out a couple of months ago now.
Yeah, talked about it. Yeah.
So I'd love to see what that looks like.
Ari said he's putting us at a half a million for, for all of that.
I did? Sure, I did.
You weren't feeling well.
All right.
You probably called me as.
Thank you for reminding me.
I know things are crazy, but you're thinking this maybe for the fall season even?
That, that's, that's our goal is to, to be able to, to play soccer.
Yeah. We'll have the team meeting and it's probably a question of, I mean, quickly get the bids out. It'll take a little while and then, you know, hopefully they'll be willing to get mobilized.
And I would make a recommendation that we split it into a contractor to do the parking lot and a fence contractor.
Yeah.
Otherwise we're going to pay an extra 20%.
Yeah.
If you have one contractor and he hires in a fence guy.
Yeah.
I mean, the fence guy even said it.
It might, it might be worthwhile then, well, this is, you don't have to care too much, but it'd be worthwhile for us to use the, the on-call PM to help with that project.
Is there money in that budget for like big scissors and a ribbon for when this thing finally opens?
I'll pay for that.
Sure. Taking money from us. They'll charge you for the parking.
Exactly. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Uh, take a quick recess here while Leah is stepped away.
Who wants to do next?
I want to stretch. That's what I want to do.
You got a recess.
Yep. Now we'll go to CPC. Waiting patiently. Don't know, can't fall asleep yet. Ari, I think your contract says you have to dance during any recess. So.
Okay.
Interpretive moves. Here we go.
Your knees are a natural stiff.
I thought those were maracas I heard. They're just your knees?
I don't know, stiff myself.
You have to share with the whole class.
Jessica, we can't take her anywhere.
So Lorraine, this is the lap copy you sent. See, see the footprints? Probably his laptop. Cat was walking on her laptop. It's funny. I've never had a cat who doesn't yow.
Jose, are we still recording?
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to be talking about my, oh, the cat on our laptop. So there. We all share, we all share in our embarrassment.
It's a judgment-free zone, I've heard. All right. Uh. You pulling somebody back in?
Calling Mark Resnick up.
Oh, 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 sorry. Couldn't see if there's somebody outside the door. All right. So moving on to discuss some possible votes to apply, uh, to the Community Preservation Committee for design and permit funding for the Old Bridge Street Nemasket River Access Project. Welcome, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you.
Would you like to walk us through this?
So this project, uh, kind of, uh, came about, well, starting working with the Open Space Committee last year. Um, and looking at all the open space properties in the community. And then, uh, this spring, uh, speaking with Nancy Gates about some of the, the properties, and she mentioned that the town has another couple of properties along the Nemasket River. We visited one about two months ago on Bond Street. Yeah, just past Jump Palm Park. Talked about doing a ramp over there and, um, most recently, um, when I talked to her about, uh, perhaps, uh, doing a CPC application for, um, uh, like a fish handicap accessible fishing ramp and improving that. She mentioned, uh, this property down on Old Bridge Street, which is owned and controlled by the Board of Selectment. So, um, that's why I put that memo together along with the, uh, plans. And also I, I went out today and took a few pictures so that you can see. So that you can see what, what the, the location looks like. And, um, so the idea here is to, um, improve this, uh, little parking area and access point.
Sorry?
To, uh, the Nemasket River. By basically proving the parking area. Right now it's all that recycled, uh, the ground asphalt, which really shouldn't be by the river. It, the drainage runs directly off that parking area and then down the little, uh, access ramp into the river. So this should be regraded, uh, towards a tree line, uh, some drainage improvements put in there. The asphalt should be removed and replaced with dense grade crushed stone. A boat ramp, uh, to allow easier access to, um, to the river for canoes and kayaks along with a, uh, handicap accessible pier. So that's, that's the proposal. The, um, the cost probably would not exceed $25,000. Most likely the cost for just the, just survey the property, do the engineering and the design for the ramp. And the, uh, would, would probably be no more than $15,000. But because it's the Nemasket River, you may have to do additional environmental studies like how it may impact the herring or how it may, um, impact, uh, some other wildlife there. And may require, uh, and will not, and will require a higher, higher level permitting, um, a ramp uh, out into the river, not even out to the navigable waterway, but just into the river. Would be, would require an Army Corps permit. Uh, it would, as long as you're out of the, stay out of the channel, it probably would be approved without much difficulty. But again, it's, it's just another permit that would be necessary. So that's why the extra, um, funding should, um, cover, cover that, uh, permitting and review.
Good.
Okay. My first, well, I'm glad that you explained because I didn't see that in, in, in the packet, that this originated from open space. Correct?
Yeah. It originated from our evaluation of the variety of open space parcels. Throughout the town and discussions with different people.
So my next question. Why are we not going through ARPA for this? Because it's in existence. It would be an improvement and it would encourage recreation usage. We're all looking at you, Ari.
It's never been proposed to. It's never come to me as a concept for ARPA. We have to look at it.
Yeah, this was, this was only brought kind of came together in the last few couple of weeks.
Okay. But my, all right. But my question still stands that we should probably look into that. Uh, because that was the, you know, the, the idea of it is that we, you know, have something that we're not building, something new, but we're, you know, enhancing something that we already have. Um.
I mean, ARPA is a, um, we have ARPA till the end of next year and ARPA is a finite resource. And this is, you know, it's, uh, obviously you can get the money from grant, from a grant that's better because you use ARPA money for something else. But, um, if the board decides that ARPA, this is a priority for ARPA, then we can certainly look at that.
But this wouldn't necessarily be a grant. This is, this is money that's coming in.
Well, if you're talking about the 15,000, you're talking about.
Right. The 25,000, that's a quartered in here.
Yeah. That, that, that could certainly be ARPA and the, the proposal was, you have, you have to do some type of this kind of work with CPA money. You know, do something. So it, it seemed like a, I think it seemed like a reasonable concept when it was brought to me.
Is it something that perhaps the design phase perhaps goes through CPA and then ARPA for construction?
I guess what you could do, and once, there are a couple of ways you could do it. One, one thing you could do is you could, you could do the design phase, the CPA, the 15,000. And then when you get to construction, you apply for the grant, which, which Nancy seems to feel strongly is a good grant application. Um, if you don't get the grant, then can always come back to ARPA. You know, and look at, and look at ARPA money for that. It would have to be town ARPA though, with county money would, would, would be eligible.
My biggest concern with this is the permitting because I know what the other work is. Right. Where the boards are is the silk removal. And I get it. That's a huge, it's removing something. I, I absolutely understand it's a much more involved. But we had all the right people working on it and last minute, all the powers that be said, nope, just kidding. We're going to make you give us all other kinds of contingency plans in case something goes wrong. And so my, my thing here is just timing. I don't know. Maybe it isn't easy enough project that we get it through Army Corps of Engineers and conservation. Well, not our own conservation, but all the other, um, folks.
Sorry. I'm just looking for something. I know Mark included it here.
And then the only other thing I have is just on the actual design here. I, I always go, every, every time, I actually like this spot a lot. It's really nice. And when you go there, when it's a nice day, it doesn't matter what time of year, someone's putting in their canoe or coming out. I always look at this parking lot and say, how can we reconfigure that to make it fit more vehicles, you know? Because I have a feeling if we make it nicer, we'll get more people to go there. So for sure. So.
So step one application, right? This is only talking about whether or not, because we control the parcels.
Yes.
Whether or not we put this for consideration to CPC, right?
That's correct. That's, that's why we're.
That deadline looks like it's May 19th for step one application.
That's correct.
So we're, that's a month away. Um, but obviously we don't really have many meetings between now and then. Would we perhaps be able to, because we're obviously, we're not approving the funds or anything. It's a CBC, CPC's jurisdiction. Potentially approve it for consideration, but in the meantime, go down those paths of, are there other funding sources that make more sense? And if we discover those, bring them to that meeting at CPC and say like, hold on.
Right. So, so this is step one. So the step one process is just, it's a super preliminary issue project. Fall under one of the categories that CPC is allowed to fund. You know, so that, that's kind of step one. And the committee, the Community Preservation Committee decided that all projects cannot have to file a step one before they can file a step two. And they have to be determined eligible. So even if, um, two months from now, you determine that you're going to go with different route for funding, you can withdraw. But if you, the select board decides not to submit a step one application and then in June decides, well, there is no other source of funding. We really want to move this forward. You can't. So, um.
Or at least you have to wait a calendar year.
You have to wait a calendar year, which is why I recommend at the very least, um, if you like this project, uh, because it's under your control, that, that you at least, um, authorize me to submit the step one application for this. So that then you can come back and discuss step two if it deemed eligible by the committee.
So going back to the parking, that's my biggest concern about the use of this area is parking because.
How bad it is now or what it could turn into?
What it could turn into because we only own the land up so far. And then after that, I do believe those are, the other land is owned privately, which if we have, you know, and I, trust me, I wish there were better places to put in. And I would love, that's why I'm looking at this parking saying, how much parking can we actually make here? Cause I just don't want us to get into an issue where, um, now we have the residents there who are used to a very quiet street. If we have such a parking problem.
I should have looked up ahead of time. I didn't. I apologize. But I'm just looking at the maps and trying to figure out. The boat ramp, canoe ramp would be to the right of the old bridge. Where would the potential pier go?
To the right of that.
So further over.
Yeah. So if you look at the second photograph. So if you look at the second photograph, there's a little bit of, uh, marsh grass right at the edge of the water to the right.
It's pretty marshy through there, isn't it?
Well, there's just that little ribbon of marsh. If you go further up to the right off the picture, there's a big, huge section of marsh. But right there, there's just that little bit of marsh grass at that, um, you know, I think that's kind of between the high and the low water as the river. Because just in a couple of weeks, it's receded quite a bit and I'm sure this rain will come back. So.
I mean, I'm, I'm kind of like, this on one hand sounds like a really nice project. I think the potential for parking could get a little crazy also. I've got a much nicer fishing pier to use. I can use it for fishing, photographs of wildlife. But if we start seeing butt light cans roll down Nemasket, that becomes a problem, a problem too.
But to be honest with you, until Frank Mooney's became our DPW director, anytime you went down there, there was trash and everything else. Cause it's kind of off the beaten path.
Yeah.
So.
I feel like we at least need.
Like anything.
Trail cameras out there to see what's going on.
Right. And we would definitely have to work with the chief of police, especially during the nicer. Really the other place to put in is on Bond Street and that's just as tiny part of parking. And, you know, so if I had my choice, unless you love canoeing that part, which maybe you do, but.
So Mark and I did have a conversation with Frank. The three of us had a conversation about, um, maintenance and support. Um, right now, um, he, his guys go out there during, during the warmer months, a couple of times a week. Maybe trash and clean up that kind of thing. He thinks that an improvement would probably result in a marginal increase. Just like, yeah, not talking like NFT or anything like that. Just, just, um, just existing demand up a little bit. More activity, maybe three, four times a week, that kind of thing. They go to collect trash. So it, it's hard, really hard to say exactly what the impact would be. In a way, you know, obviously you want to, if you're going to put money there, you want it to be a success. So, but that, that's, it's, it's very realistic to say that success means it's going to be more support required.
I mean, I know if people in the audience that live near this location, if they wish to speak to any concerns they already have about it. If they don't want to, that's okay too.
I would like to.
Yeah, you may.
Robert Stanish, Bridge Street. And I'm also a member for, um, CPC for full disclosure, but speaking as a resident, um, that property used to be part of the farm that I live on. My father-in-law donated those parcels to the town, I believe in the early seventies. Cause before Bridge Street went through, that was all the farm. And then the state in the late sixties took it by a minute, donate, domain and put ocean spray in. So my father-in-law donated those, the two parcels that you're speaking of. And I'm very interested to know where you're going to put that pier because those two parcels are underwater most of the year. When it floods, which is, last year they had very minimal flooding. It's pretty high right now and it has been pretty high, um, as far as the parking and the extra traffic. There's a lot of activity down there now because a nearby manufacturing plant will not let their employees smoke on the property. So there's a lot of people that go down there during the day as it is, um, and use it. Trash is a huge problem. The cigarette butts that go out the window end up in the river. The nips, the needles, it's, it's constant.
Is that, I've never actually gone past the bridge itself. I mean, is there still a pretty walkable path across that to the manufacturing?
Up and over. It shows ocean spray. There's a fence right there.
There's a fence.
Yeah.
There's a fence there.
No, you can walk right through.
Right, well, you can walk. Well, there used to be a fence, right? When you go, there's no fence.
I walked all the way up to Ocean Spray last week, so.
So it's down then?
There's a well-worn path.
Yeah, I know, the path is definitely.
Yeah. So, you know, people from Ocean Spray walk down there, probably have lunch, have a smoke and go back to work or whatever, so.
I mean, for me, I honestly feel like, you know, I want to say, is this all or nothing? Like, can we just fix the boat ramp part? But I think the part that really appeals to me is having someplace for someone with disabilities to be able to just go out to fish. But again, looking, and actually, Ari and I were there last week too. I went over, I went again this past weekend. I really like that spot for some reason. I don't know why, but. It seems to me that I don't know that we're gonna get permission to cut a path through here to make the pier too. So I really don't want to get ahead of ourselves with the whole permitting thing. I feel like they're gonna hammer us on the permitting. I really do. There's all kinds of endangered species down there too. There's red-bellied crouters. They cross the street and come on my farm and lay the rigs in June, mid-June. And then I help them back across the street and they're going back down to the river.
So if you look at the photograph, the top photograph, the ramp would begin for the pier to the left of the last tree, right on the parking area grade, so that someone in the wheelchair could wheel directly out. There wouldn't be any tree cutting.
So on the, on the close-up, this one?
Yes.
Good, it's right here?
Yes, but it would start kind of off.
Off the page a little bit.
Off the page a little bit, so that it would be at the same grade as the parking lot, so that, and that would extend out. So you wouldn't be doing any tree cutting. And actually, when I was out here with one of the engineers who worked for pricing, you know, we would probably pull this parking lot back away from those trees, so that we would direct all the drainage toward the trees and then into a swale and protect that swale with a, like a wooden guard rail, so that, you know. So I think the other thing is increased activity and usage brings more people here. Will also deter, when there's more people around, you are less likely to have, you know.
People you don't want.
Misbehaving people, right? And so the other thing, once we get the property surveyed, and we determine where the edge of the wetlands are, as well as the property, we may be able to, although we're, we would have probably a single row of parking, extend the parking a little bit to the right of the top page, where there are just some bushes here. And so then we may be able to park a few more vehicles in a line. So we have a more defined parking area.
Just, I'm not against this, but I'm just calling everything out, because like we said, this is our responsibility to decide the usage for the actual town property. But you do have a lot of folks who come with their trailers too. So now you're cutting each parking spot potentially down. You know, one person with, one vehicle with a trailer is now taking up two spots, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you look at the car that's parked there, I mean, you can put the trailer and then another car behind it. I don't know where that came from. So you, if you even pulled that back one car, so that you have the swale and the guard rail, you still have plenty of room to park the car and a trailer to head in, so.
I have a question more for my own education. I mean, are we limited to those parcels on the side? Or is this also a town road where if we so determined through some procedure, you'd actually pull back from the bridge and get rid of all that asphalt and put in a permeable surface that you could use?
Yeah, I'm not sure on the status of the actual old Bridge Street. The bridge, there's still the bridge there, you know? And the asphalt over the bridge is broken up and crumbling, and that was, the bridge stops, well, halfway across the bridge, it becomes Middleborough. So kind of step two on this thing would be to, you know, meet with Middleborough, you know, kind of as a longer term thing. And there's no guardrails on the bridge. The structure may be like in good, you know, structurally, the concrete, I'm not a bridge guy, but may be fine for pedestrians for a long time. So perhaps there's a, you know, the surface should be improved, some guardrails put up, and maybe the two towns work together in the coming years to improve that portion of this area as well, so.
We just put up like a big wall and say, no crossing? I mean, there's nothing on the other side besides.
You could do that.
Not shown fast.
Yeah. Right? I'm open to ideas. I think the point really is this is just whether or not we want to submit a step one.
That's correct.
CPC can certainly say like, this really doesn't fit the criteria, or just play no, or we find a different funding source. Obviously, I agree with Leah, permitting is probably gonna be challenging. We certainly don't want to increase issues down there.
That's why we make the tough decisions.
Yeah.
Someone's gotta make them.
So why wouldn't Open Space sponsor this through, to the CPC?
I haven't really discussed this with Open Space Committee as far as this particular project, so.
Town owns the property, the town.
Yeah.
Send the select board.
Really has to go through the select board.
Yeah.
Because if we say no, there's almost no point.
Right, but I guess.
Conservation areas.
But I mean, who's? I guess the question is, how did this get originated so that we could get this in by the deadline? Like, who put, who on this?
I did.
So you put?
I put, I put this, all this together.
Open Space meets on the eleventh.
So you knew about, well, so you learned about this through the Open Space? I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I learned about this particular, I didn't know this property existed. I looked at other parcels through the Open Space. I didn't realize this existed till I, till most recently, when I called Nancy about putting, Nancy Yates about putting the ramp over at the Bond Street property. Because I didn't know about this until two weeks ago. So, and she, she said, oh, there's a better location for fishing. That's a good location, but there's a better one. So she showed me this one. And so, so then I put all this material together for the select board.
I mean, honestly, the part of this that I really love is giving folks with, you know, disabilities a place to go and be independent. And I just, I'll only say it one more time, I'm leery about the permit to stick, you know, pylons or whatever in the, in the water, the permitting.
So Jeremy Bissonette from Zenith Consulting is the engineer that I spoke with. And his firm, along with someone who works for him, designs and permits these types of piers throughout the area. You know, Long Pond in particular, for Lakeville, but as far down as permitting docks along the coastline as well. So, so his experience is something like this would be permissible. It may take a little bit of time and some effort, but it is, because we're not going out into the main channel of the river, we're just in the, those coastal would be the intertidal zone, but where, where we have high water and low water here, that it is certainly just like any of the docks along Long Pond, something that would be permitted.
I have a question for Tracy, actually. I don't see any postings for Open Space. Do you know if they have a regular cadence of their meetings?
It's typically meet every month, right?
Once a month, and they meet a week from Thursday.
A week from this coming Thursday?
Yes.
So May fourth? We could ask if they have any opinions and then add it to our pre-town meeting, meeting if we really wanted to. Otherwise, we have no other opportunity until after the May nineteenth deadline. I'd be willing to put it forward strictly to meet the deadline. And then during that time, investigate alternate funding sources if they make sense or not. And then, do we know, I could probably turn and look, when CPC would actually meet to look at these projects?
They're going to meet, I don't know the exact date, but probably a week after these are due, a week or two right after these are due. They want to get back to people so they can have as long as a time period, because the full application, depending on the project, requires a substantial amount of work, so.
So the nineteenth is a Friday in May. So they, could they potentially come back and say, we believe this is a good project based on the following criteria?
Yeah, I think what they're gonna do is they're gonna determine whether the project is eligible to be submitted for a phase two project. Not necessarily whether they all like it or don't like the project, but does it fall into one of the categories that's eligible for funding? So I think that's, that's really what the determination is. So it's a very simple, narrow scope of the determination. And then, then the second step would be, now, as far as timing goes, you know, then if, if we submitted a step two, and it was approved for funding by the committee, it would then go to the fall town meeting for actual appropriation, at which time we would then work on the design and the permitting of the project. So that perhaps a year from now, we could be looking at trying to obtain other grant funding for the actual construction, whether it's through, you know, there's a Mass Office of Fishing and Boating Access that works on projects like these, or something like the park grant process. So there are, there are some alternative funding opportunities besides just CPC.
So it sounds like we have a significant amount. If we said, yeah, sure, and if even if CPC said, yep, eligible, we've got a significant runway of time to figure out a lot of these things.
Yes. And maybe it turns out that for the construction, you won't have other ARPA projects in a year from now. If it's permitted, you could want to use some leftover ARPA money for some of the construction, so.
And we're all new to this process, but in the CPC process, is there opportunity for community input on each project as well?
I don't believe, well, all the meetings are public and open to the public. And all the dates are on the, as, as we go through each step, will be on the website. So I don't think there's a requirement for a public hearing, but, but then, of course, there'll be the regular fall town meeting process as well.
Right. And some of the permitting might require it as well. I mean, in the interest of moving forward here, we spent a lot of time on this, more than I expected. I mean, does anybody want to make a motion, one way or the other? Personally, I'm, I'm fine approving it, given that it sounds like there's lots of checks and balances moving forward, and we're just the controls of the parcel. Any motion, or are we done?
I don't want to say no, but I'm trying to find a way to say yes that I can live with, with, yeah, I'm not. I feel like I'm in the shark tank and, you know, because of these reasons, I'm out. But I understand that it's town property. This is great. I didn't know that it was town property until today. Well, till I was reading this, but, and to sponsor something that I don't really know much about, I have a hard time sending that to the CPC. So therefore, I'm out. Honestly, Brian, I think if you haven't seen this, I think you should go take a look at it.
I was there for the APC.
Oh, oh, that's right.
Dog and Pony Show.
Yeah.
They brought stuff there.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we're not going to be passing this through tonight. There's really no time to table it for, for the discussion, given the doc timeline, so. But we can look at other funding sources outside of CPC if we want to.
Well, I mean, we have a May eighth meeting, but.
Yeah.
If something changes.
You don't want to take you around too.
Yep, yep. We could do that.
Is additional information that you'd like from Mark? If he's gonna be specified, if he could back to you.
I mean, I would like, and, you know, if no one else cares, I can go talk to the chief, but I would like to know if we do have any, you know, problems there, if the police go out there. I'd like to get a sense of how many people actually use it. I know, like, when you go out there now, there's one, I mean, we were out there last week, I was out there this weekend, there was two cars.
Two cars.
Three cars. But that, it's not even kayak season. And I, you know, my concern is, and I just know this from the AP, we're, we're working on the APC stuff for four years, lots of folks are looking to find places to put in. And I'm just afraid it's gonna go like that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think it's a good first step to even identify it. So if we come around to it through some other means or next year, I mean, the initial work is done.
Okay.
So I appreciate that.
Sure.
All right.
Still here for this one.
Okay, great. Good point. So don't go too far, Mark.
No, just changing.
So we got, discuss requests for mouse housing for comments in regards to proposed development known as Rocky Woods off of Free Town Street. So there was a lot of interest when this first kind of circulated through email, when we got the first letter. So last week, I took it upon myself to request a meeting with the chairs of planning and ZBA and town council, and Ari joined us there as well. And just to help us understand what, what is this step? What is this process? What are the comments asking for here? So if this project, a 40B project, were to actually file for a project plan, or application, probably using the wrong term, that would go to ZBA. And ZBA would be in charge of that special permit. As far as I understand it, what they're asking for now is essentially the select board to respond and say, or don't respond, or respond within thirty days and say, here are concerns the town has.
This housing is asking, right?
Right. So according to town council, essentially, if we do put concerns in, they're essentially just sent on to the developer as, here are things that you will have to think about if you come and apply for this project. So I thank you for working with planning, I believe, to collect a number of thoughts. We've got Noah from Mark, from Chief O'Brien, Chief Perkins. Do we feel free to add anything I've left out, or if we want to dive into the comments? Or Lorraine, Leah, if you've got anything you'd like to say or ask before we jump in?
I do have some very specific things, so I'm not sure what everybody else's things are, but, I mean, I'll be happy to start.
Is there any correction to the process so far? Or is that?
No, the way you described it is, is very accurate. Fair and accurate, yes. That's correct. This is kind of the first step.
Okay.
Is for him to get approval for funding. So, so that's what it is. It's a, exactly what it's called, site eligibility, is the site eligible, so.
And that's sort of where my, my comments are coming from. It's like, I don't know if they're too specific for this, but I'll just put them out there. So I do know, we have several folks in town who are very concerned about any Native American, you know, history that may be there. My sense is that what, what has been done, not even in Lakeville, but in other places, is when things are identified, they're just like, okay, put a fence around it. Unless it's this massive thing, they don't stop a project for that. So I guess. is when things are identified, they're just like, okay, put a fence around it. Unless it's this massive thing, they don't stop a project for that. So I guess, I just, you know, as a Select Board member, knowing how important Native American history is around here, I'd just really like for, you know, the state to know that. I'd really like that vetted.
If I can just chime in on that piece of it. I do know that as part of the process, because if, if there's any federal fundings on this or involvement in this at all, when this application is going through the process, I always say, National Heritage, did I say that right? Thank you. And the tribes are notified that this project's going in and then they would, you know, send out whatever they need to send out for archaeological study, you know, parameters, which I guess goes on to the, you know, the cost for the builder, or whoever it is, the developer, has to absorb that cost. But I do know that it goes up to that level where it is, you know, goes out to the tribes, at least to, you know, the Wampanoag Tribal Council, I guess.
Yeah, I would hope that if anything's identified, it's not just protecting that site, but also ensuring that the usage of it is protected going forward, so.
So if they, given the large size of the site, they probably have to file a MIPA report. So when they scope that out, they should at least require what's called the Phase One assessment of the area. Now, this being the lower area, as opposed to what has been verbally conveyed, I've never seen any reports, is that the caves or the sites that they were concerned about is in the upper hilly rocky portion. But again, if they do a Phase One analysis, which is kind of like a general survey of the property, they may just determine that others parts of this need a second phase and even a third phase of study, so. But I believe that would come out during the MIPA analysis.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone knows I care about that. So I think it's an important part and I don't necessarily think if a small area is found that it's worth, you know, scrapping the whole project for sure, but we owe it to history to find that small area, so. So my next concerns are, I will say that I haven't driven a child to the high school in about five or six years, but the last time I did, traffic by the schools is, was not great in the mornings and then in the afternoons. And again, it's traffic that dissipates as everyone gets there and then goes in and then as everyone leaves, but then it's also really problematic anytime there's an event there, even if it's just one school having an event. I mean, I've literally gone all the way into Free Town to come home back on the side of Lakeville because the traffic is so bad. Now, that's not the same kind of traffic that you have when you have retail establishments or whatever, but I do kind of feel bad for the folks who live there that they may incur, like in the morning, they're gonna have to leave 45 minutes earlier to beat the traffic just to get through the school traffic. So I know they'll do a traffic study, I just want to be sure it's stressed that.
Yeah, I think during kind of scoping that study, you know, that should be, you know, part of what they evaluate and, you know, how they're gonna impact that, you know. So in working, in looking at that intersection of the school driveways and there's probably a better alternative to the current configuration, so.
And then whose cost, that's my other question, at whose cost, who pays to reconfigure that?
Right, well, that's always the big question.
Right.
But, you know, as far as evaluating it and looking at it, I think that's, you know, something that definitely we could at least request as part of this.
Another concern is, unlike a lot of the other projects that we have, which are, we approve town water, this is definitely gonna be well water, correct? That hasn't changed, there's no water that runs up Free Town Street, to our knowledge, correct?
To my knowledge, no, I mean, he has, I don't know exactly where all the water lines run. However, he has shown on his preliminary, very preliminary sketch drawing that he will have a private well on site.
Okay, what I guess I'm looking for, which I really, really must stress, I don't know how we put it in writing, but I think that, you know, the same contractor, and while I've heard, you know, fantastic things, you know, about this group as a contractor, I also have heard all the water and wastewater cost stories from the residents that live at, you know, one of their current places. And, you know, again, I have not seen anyone's water bill, but I've heard estimates of $1,800 every quarter for the first few years for water in as well as water out, wastewater. Now, since that time, I do know that, you know, diverters have been put on and, you know, they've honed it down, but I guess my point is, we've learned, you know, what worked and what may not have worked there. And I would like to see some real caution when the units would be sold to explain to folks that, you know, you can't put kitty litter down your septic tank, you know, because, and again, you know, failing septic tanks isn't necessarily on the contractor, the developer, or anyone, it could be, you know, personal use, but I really feel like I just don't want another whole group of residents who purchase a home just to find out now they're forking out, you know, all kinds of money because some folks didn't know that they're supposed to treat their septic tank kindly. So I don't know how we put all that on paper, but, you know, that's definitely.
At this point, so we're not ZBA, we can't do special permit restrictions.
No, but I.
At this point, we just need to summarize it into a general concern.
Yeah, but that's my general concern.
And the Chief, Fire Chief brought up a point as well for fire protection because apartments would have to have sprinklers now, which they didn't have to have before.
Right, and you know what? Honestly, Mr. Chair, I've been talking to more and more people who have never had their water tested, well water. I mean, I don't know if it's considered, if it's considered a public drinking water supply and it would be under mandatory testing, but, and this is all because of, you know, the water issue that was at the school last week, I received several phone calls on that, but, you know, all, everything that goes into water concerns is my concern.
Yeah, my understanding is that if they do put a well on site to assert that development is considered a public water supply, they may have to follow testing requirements and protocols.
I think the water cost issue, we're maybe gonna dive in a little deep here, but in the case of what you're talking about, for the water cost issue, through our municipal water, and they have a kind of a bum deal in terms of the way that the meters connected and that's really not the developer's fault. Developer put in individual meters, there's issues with the city.
Right, but.
Not making excuses, but I just think that, you know, it might be a different situation.
Right, but, I mean, I'm really, I really, anyone who lives there, I really should know, I think they should know ahead of time if it's well water. I mean, I'm responsible with my well water to test it, to make sure it's, you know, doesn't have minerals, that, you know, whatever, an abundance of any one mineral, but also if the septic, if the well fails, I'm responsible for.
Well, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be even more than a private well, it's gonna be a community.
Right, but that's my point, so, is there gonna be a fee associated with the access to water in? Is my question.
I think that's far beyond what we have to respond to Mass Housing at this point.
Well, I still think Mass Housing should know that.
I think it's fair to say that just note that it's gonna be community water and every, it's important to ensure that it's affordable. Again, I think Brian's probably right, I think it's good to get on the record on it, I think Brian's absolutely right though, Mass Housing.
What was conveyed to us by Town Council, essentially, anything we provide is not going to affect the outcome.
Right, but if we're talking about putting affordable components in there, I don't know if you buy an affordable component, if you get a discount on your water rate, I don't know that that's a thing. So I'm just trying to represent anyone who lives there before they even get there, because I know better.
Yes?
Are you making that type of town water, no?
No.
Okay. I mean, my concern is, that many units with one community well, what's it gonna do with, to all the other people living around the water table? That's a lot of water coming out of a well. It's gonna affect that whole area.
And that's why typically with, you can correct me, Mark, Ari, anybody, but 40Bs don't have as many units usually if there's not town water.
That's where Board of Health comes in, really, that's a regulatory question.
Yeah, Board of Health.
I think that the comments that you had included in here came from, some of them came from Planning Board also.
Yeah, yeah, from what I.
Couple I hadn't thought of before that I think would be relevant to that type of project. Just on a sidebar, what I'd like to know is, if this does come to fruition, what do our housing index numbers look like? I don't need it now, but I'm just saying on a sidebar, I'd be interested to know, because it's 200 units here.
And this is all the land?
Right.
There could be another phase later, potentially.
Yeah, so this is 200 units, but they are, my understanding is, they're gonna be for sale units, so only 25% or 15% of the units would count toward our.
What did you say, 15? I know I read that book, I can just.
A quarter of them are affordable.
Yeah, so a quarter of them would be affordable and then because it's a for-sale project, only that.
Portions considered.
Portion would count toward our housing inventory number, so. It's only in a rental project where you can count the entire number of units in the project.
I mean, can I ask, Brian, why is my concern for water not as council wouldn't consider it? When, you know, like what Mark has on here is a trail.
Oh, I haven't gotten to that yet.
No, okay. Well, my other, my other last comment I have, and then that's, other than, you know, with this, like you said, I think your first comment was some age restricted, I'm not sure. Age, yeah, okay, so you have that one in there, but my other comment is, I don't know about a sidewalk either, that's.
Yeah, that's.
Millions and millions of dollars and then we would have to maintain the sidewalk, too.
That, yeah, so that kind of leads into what I was gonna comment, which is, I think all these points have merit, that they need to be reconstructed in a concern, not a action that we're asking the developer. Is there any for concerns now?
Yeah, I mean, I understand, like, most community sidewalks aren't really something a lot of people like to have, but I feel that just given the number of units, it should be mentioned and so that's why I put it in here. Everything that is in here, even if it went directly to the zoning board and the application, would still not be.
Sure.
Chairman, I would also speak to that, the letter that I would draft on your behalf to Mass Housing wouldn't say you need to require them to put in the sidewalk. I would say transportation access could be an issue.
Yeah, you know, potential lack of pedestrian safety due to a lack of infrastructure, blah, blah, blah.
But that's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get that prescriptive on the sidewalk.
Similarly, we could construct something with regards to water access and everything else.
No.
What is our deadline for response?
May 1st, I believe.
Ooh, so.
So, you know, typically what has happened is that the board will give its direction on what needs to be in there and now we'll go ahead and draft it and send it out.
Okay, so we got all this stuff from Mark and the Planning Board, we've got the Fire Chief's comments about sprinkler systems, call volume, lack of fire protection water, recommends that there should be some kind of storage there for fire protection. Chief Perkins did happen to mention, which I didn't know, that there's actually a Rocky Woods Road right off of Howland Road.
Yeah.
And that this, he suggests that for public safety reasons, any future development, street naming, construction, site referrals, et cetera, should not be called Rocky Woods as Mass State 911 would consider a duplicate name location.
I'll definitely put that in there, yeah.
So we've got only a week before the other response is due, although Town Council said we could ask for an extension.
It really depends on whether you want to just tell me to go forth early and write it, in which case I can get that done now.
Do the members want to just give Ari free rein and send it in? Or bring something back and approve that?
Can I ask a question? So you, you guys had a meeting with Town, did you send us like a follow-up to the meeting?
Follow-up such as?
Like this is what, how, because honestly, this is the first time I've done this and I've been asking everyone for a little direction.
Yeah, so we did ask Town Council that meeting, I requested it, given the lack of time we had. And one of the action items on that is to provide us with a start to finish, here's what one of these projects would look like in every step in between, so that we all understand what this would look like, starting from right here at the site eligibility.
Yeah, because that was my thing, it was like, you know, I don't even know what I'm supposed to be, you know, offering, so I hit my big high point here.
Yeah, no, I mean, offer it all, send it all to Ari, and it's literally just concerns we send back and they pass those on to the developer and they'll offer, probably come with a project, so. Do we feel more comfortable reaching out for an extension, if that is an option?
I mean, I think we've expressed a lot.
I'm pretty confident I can put something together.
Yeah, Ari, Ari can have it done in no time.
Honestly, I don't know that it's gonna make much difference, unfortunately.
Right.
It's kind of an opening bid, with anything else.
Okay. Was there a vote for this one?
No, that's a.
No, just discuss.
If you'd like to vote to directly to send a letter, you can.
No, we didn't put it on the agenda.
No, but I think Ari could submit it on our behalf without a vote.
Yeah, what I'll do, we've done this before, we've done a couple of these since I've been here. We'll say that the Select Board met and discusses project as requested by Mass Housing. The following concerns were identified and I'll leave them out and it'll be a combination of information from Mark, information from Mike, information from Matt, as well as things that you've said as well. If anyone thinks of anything else for me to throw in, just let me know.
Works for me.
Good.
Sounds good, appreciate it. Mark, thank you for doing all that work and coordinating with Planning to help with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we take a five-minute recess?
Absolutely, come back at 8:55. Kick me in the back when you're ready. All right, so Mark's got the, all right, sorry, Mark.
It's okay.
It is 21, 20. 20 or 21?
20, 20 or 21.
All right, Tuesday, I'm gonna assume we're back on, it's 8:55. Thank you, sir. So we're gonna go to number 20 or 21, discuss some possible votes to renew Earth Rule Permit for T.L. Edwards at 435 Bedford Street. All right, any questions or comments from the board or anything Mark would like to share before we just get going?
Not really, as I sent my memo, I went out to the site, T.L. Edwards, he gave me a tour of the site, what materials are there. It's really not his primary site anymore, he has another one that he purchased a number of years ago, so this one, he really just stores material, sometimes he brings some material in and processes it, so.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of this for T.L. Edwards at 435 Bedford Street. What is, just for discussion real quick, Tracy, what are the dates of the permit, when does it expire?
Um, March 31st.
Okay. So should I second? Yes, okay, second.
Uh, quick discussion. I just want to say, I think our form and procedure here needs a little updating, because it's brought to my attention that these are typically paid in arrears, once they know their final number, but our form says the money is due for what they're requesting ahead of time. So, and this gentleman seems to be stuck in a position where he's not actually excavating, he's just moving out stockpiles that he has. So I don't know, I know there's a lot of work that went into the earth removal bylaw update a year or two ago, I don't remember exactly when.
Right.
I don't know if there's some extra language we should throw in there, because if he's just moving stockpiles out, it seems, like, we don't want him being double-charged either. If he excavated years ago and is now paying again to haul it out of there. But, yeah, other than that.
Mr. Chair, we'll absolutely take a look at the form.
All right, cool. All right, member Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Vivian?
Aye.
Day, aye, thank you. Thank you, Mark, for meeting with them at the site. All right. All right, Rust, are you here for anything in particular?
Doing my job.
Just hanging out?
Just doing my job.
All right, so we've cleared the room of everybody that had to be here, besides us. All right, do you want to go back and do appointments, 5, 6, and just start going down the line?
Sure.
All right. All right, so we deferred a few appointments from reorganization, responding to my spot. All right, discuss some possible vote and appointments for the remaining positions regarding reorganization and select board. So, if you'd like, we can just go down the list. You both are carrying quite the weight, and I am not at the moment, so I would like to offer myself up, wherever you'd like. Lorraine, how, how attached are you to the parking clerk?
It's, well, it's pretty easy, I've had two, in the two years, one hearing, no show, and then to schedule another hearing, but they settled outside, so didn't have to have a hearing.
All right.
So that's, that's really no left, no left at all, but I'm happy to, because I know you're, you were on the regional finance committee before, as a representative from the finance committee.
Yep.
So if you want to continue that, that would be great, I'm happy to hand that one off. I do, the school department liaison, I mean, if you'd like to take that one as well.
I've got a general question on the liaison appointments, actually, for both of you.
Yeah, I've got a huge question about liaison there, yeah.
But, I mean, if you'd like, I'm happy to take over the regional FinCom committee, unless Leah, you'd like to take on regional FinCom committee?
I'm attached to the ones I have, so I don't want anything new. I don't want anything new, but, you know. I, I don't want to give any, any of the ones I have up, so I won't take anything new.
All right. How do we want to do these, then? Do we want to? Tracy, what's best for you at this point in the evening?
So if we start at the top?
Okay.
Director of Veteran Services.
All right. I think to balance these out, there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 14 positions, we already voted Leah Union at the last one, 13. I, I need at least three of these things to help out here, it looks like. So Director of Veteran Services, Lorraine, would you like to continue on that, or?
Um, I think you can take that one, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, I'll probably still be somewhat involved behind the scenes on it, but not to go for it.
All right, that's fine.
So that was Brian for Veteran Services?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to make Brian the designated for Director of Veteran Services. Second.
Okay, Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Vivian?
Aye.
Day, aye. You mentioned regional, well, do I just go down, is there anything we want to change until we get to the regional FinCom, put it that way? Actually, you know what? Budget. Given the change in the bylaw and the scheduling last time, my understanding is now that the town administrator's role has been clarified more, that they present the budget to us. Obviously, we'll all be somewhat involved behind the scenes, but do we need a designated point person for, say, FY '25?
No.
Okay. Leah, any thoughts?
Um. No. I don't think so, I think the way the budget's gone in the last two years has been pretty, you know, and like we said, we changed this past year.
Okay, all right, so it sounds like we'll strike that?
Yep.
There's no one in it anyways right now?
Yep.
Okay, so Veteran Services, Leah, you want to keep your Plymouth County Advisory Board?
Yep.
Okay, Lorraine, you're happy with parking clerk, you said?
You can have that.
I think you did it once, right?
Yeah, I did.
Last time, yeah, yeah.
We had a bunch of tickets back to like the 80s that were still in the system.
Oh my god.
Really?
We still have more.
Oh, there's more still?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a look at it.
All right, I'll make a motion that Brian take on the parking clerk designee. Second.
Okay, Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Vivian?
Aye.
Day, aye, thank you. Did we do FinCom already? Or did we just talk about it?
The budget?
I'll make a, a motion that we appoint Brian as the select board member liaison to the regional FinCom.
Second.
Okay, Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Vivian?
Aye.
Day, aye, okay, there's three. I did want to ask about these liaison positions, because I'm not exactly sure what the goal of them are. I mean, COA falls under Ari, school department, Ari's got a lot of communication with parking commission, or it's an enterprise fund, maybe, but is there any strong feelings about keeping these, getting rid of these, any bylaw that states we have to have these?
I don't think there's a bylaw, but I think at one point these were created to help improve, you know, lines of communication and have those particular entities have the point, a point of contact for concerns to be brought back to the, to the board.
Okay.
I would say that you can make an argument that COA and park commission are on the same level, because the park commission is an elected body. COA is not, so, you know, sometimes electeds need to talk to electeds. So, you know, regardless of what you decide to do, you might want to keep that one.
Park?
Parks, yeah, because I, I just, I just think, knowing the park commission, I think functionality-wise, it'd be better if they had, they're going to want a board member to, to, they can talk to.
Because against Lake School Department, I'm assuming that's Freelake?
Yes.
So, I mean, the, the department itself is not elected, the school committee is.
Right.
And I, I-
There's been no liaisoning, for me, this past year, with the school department.
Okay.
At all. Other than showing up at the meetings and, because I'm not here on behalf of the, the select board. If I were the liaison to a particular board and the, and the board voted with direction, then at that point, as the liaison, you would speak on behalf of the board. But other than that, I would never speak on behalf of the board. It was more of, okay, they talked about this, and that's it.
Gotcha, okay.
And it's just as easy for any of us to grab a coffee and watch a meeting.
Right, yeah, especially now. Leah, do you have any thoughts if we were to eliminate school department liaison?
Um.
Jumping to a conclusion based on what you said, sorry if that's-
No, it's fine, because I think that the, you know, the ultimate goal here is to have the superintendent of the schools be in communication with the town administrators from both communities on any ongoings, any issues, any, you know, anything.
Yeah, yeah.
At any point in time, a school committee member can reach out to any one of the board members here.
Yep.
And if it becomes something that needs to be discussed as a board, then we schedule that out on an agenda. I don't know that there's any benefit in having a person for the school department, I just, I don't think that there was any use for it, other than balancing out this designee.
Probably how this needs to start. Leah?
Um, I could go either way with that one.
I'll, I'll make a suggestion, then, and we can always change it later. What if we choose to vacate that, let Ari do his magic, see how things go, and if we determine that there's been a need for liaisoning, we can certainly come back.
Okay.
Does that work?
It's fine. We'll just leave it blank.
Yeah, I mean, do you need a motion on that, Tracy? Vacate, maybe? Okay. All right.
Um, to the school point, the regional finance committee, just remember, there's a regional finance committee meeting tomorrow.
I, I know, I'm, I'm going to go anyways, because I already said I would, but-
Do you want me to share with you as well?
You got it, didn't you?
That's a quorum issue, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a quorum issue, maybe I'll just watch it.
No, then you go, I won't go, I'm good.
Sure?
Yep.
Okay. What time is it tomorrow?
6:30.
It's by Zoom. I'll share it with you.
No, it's 6 o'clock, you're right.
Six, that should work. Okay. Leah, COA and park, how much liaisoning, that's the term for the evening?
Um, I spend hours and hours talking to various people in both. I go to coffee hour at the COA, and, again, to Lorraine's point, I never speak for the board, but, you know, sometimes folks from the actual council will be there and, you know, they ask questions. I always direct them to go through proper channels, but I think, I think it's nice to go there once a month. Sometimes I go more often and talk to, whether, you know, it's the staff there, whether it's the seniors there, or whether it's folks that are either on the fundraising committee or on the actual council on aging.
What you just said there actually brings up an interesting distinction, like, is this to the COA board of directors themselves? Like, is that how we would look at it?
Well, I took it, I'm never going to say no to someone who wants to ask me a question, so I don't ask them to identify. Although they usually do, they'll say, I'm on the actual council, or I'm, you know, the fundraiser, I'm glad to meet you, or, you know. So I actually do a lot of work with that. And, you know, we have our appointed Friday coffee that the, the selectmen tried to get to, but I try to go one other Friday a month, just because, you know, the seniors have a lot of questions, and I just kind of consider that part of my liaisoning.
Which we need to get me into that rotation, too. Okay, well, maybe we'll leave COA alone for now. Parks, Ari made a point about elected to elected. Is that something we think we should hang on to? Oops, sorry, Lorraine?
No, just, I think it's bigger. I think we should just leave it for now, as is, and I know Ari Franklin and, you know, with Melissa just coming on as the chair, we'll have to, you know, establish rapport, too, with, you know, with the projects and the ongoing things that are happening over there. But I think that the lines of communication need to be really open, because we've been relying on our Department of Works for a lot of the work that's being done on the park, so I just want to make sure that we continue to keep those lines of communication open.
I agree with Lorraine on this, it's, um, we've made tentative progress with them to kind of get the situation more functional, and the more levels of communication, the more different ways we have of coordinating, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good.
And just because I actually do that one, too, a lot of times, new people will call me and they'll say, gee, now that I did this, what am I supposed to be doing? And I can at least steer them in the right direction, and, you know, not, not for any other reason, but, you know, a lot of folks feel as though, and they shouldn't, that, you know, they don't want to bother Ari or Tracy, or, so I'm happy to, like, you know, go through, you know, like, the level 101, and then if they, I always encourage them, this is, you know, the way that, that the whole system kind of works, but, you know, let them know who everyone else is. But even with the folks that have been there for a long time, you know, sometimes they'll say, hey, you know, what do you think? And I can always say something like, well, in the past, the board has, so it does, I think the communication is pretty good.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, moving on, there's no objections, then? FinCom, we did, we already voted Leah, or appointed Leah at the last meeting, and then the remaining 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, all have annual appointments, so we do have to vote those ones?
You knew them in July, when you do the other ones.
Oh, I see. What do the members feel like? Would you like to do these now, or do them in July?
July's fine, with me.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, July's fine, I have mentioned to Ari that I do have a resident who's been reaching out to me repeatedly to try to join economic development, so I'm not sure, you know, that's, and I, I've even said to this person that that's not one that I'm, you know, part of, so I've just been referring him to Ari to work on that.
Okay.
I know who it is. He reached out to me as well.
Now I feel left out.
The emergency planning one, well, the emergency planning one, don't you have, like, MEMA history under your belt?
Yeah, I worked with them for five years.
Well, then. Okay. We can look at the rest of them.
I'd still like to do that one, but-
Okay. I'm not going to fight for it.
Energy advisory, we meet once a year.
Okay. Every community, mostly.
Yeah, yeah. And then if there's anything that comes up, but there really isn't anything, so.
All right.
I give all them.
Oh, we can, we'll hit those all up in July, I guess. Um, all right, let's, let's skip Ari's thing for now, and pop down to 13, 14, revisit possible vote and designation of donation from Sun Multisport, Sun Multisport Events for Patriot Triathlon, isn't that also the other event as well? Uh, that's 13, 14. All right, so, Sun Multisports has offered a $1,500 donation to the town nonprofit organizations for allowing the Patriot Half Triathlon to use Lakeville roads. In 2022, the donation was split between the Friends of the Council on Aging, the Friends of the Lakeville Library, and Betty's Neck for events. So-
Can we put this on, can we put this on for the, the 22nd of May? Because I'd like to at least inquire a little bit more about some of the other organizations and maybe work with Ari to create a list of all the agent, you know, all the places that we could actually, because it seems that we, we're consistently donating to these.
Yep. I had a similar comment in mind.
Yeah, and then, yes, and I'd like to just make sure that there's, you know, that we've got, that we can go down a list and say, okay, well, we've, we've donated this much here, and this much here.
Yeah, I think there should be some rotating names through here.
Yeah, so, is that okay to just move that to the table, to the 22nd?
Works for me, Leah, any objections?
No objections.
Sounds good, we'll go to the 22nd. It is actually, like, not that easy to use the IRS website, like, look for nonprofits in town. It is not, not easy at all.
It was not.
And if anybody's still listening, please send your names in if we don't know about you.
Yeah.
Is that the ghost of Lake Camp I hear? All right, um, fifteen, sixteen. Discuss some possible votes to reappoint David Frazer as Animal Control Officer and Darcy Lee, Lisa Fidelchi, Kathy Sealy, and Ronnie Frazer as Assistant Animal Control Officers.
I'll make that motion that we appoint um the mentioned um with office, uh, terms to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-four, second.
All right, Carbone.
Carbone, aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Day, aye, thank you. Hopefully just as simple. Next agenda item, uh, Will Corey's appointment as Veterans Agent and Graves Officer expires the end of this month. Um, so would we like to reappoint him? Um. Let's see, it would be a term expiring also April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I don't, I don't remember that one, but yes, I'll make the motion that we appoint um, reappoint Wil, uh, Wilford Corey as our Veterans Agent and Graves Officer with a term to expire.
April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
There you go.
All right.
Second.
Carbone.
Carbone, aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Day, aye, thank you.
Go to.
Look at us go. Um, a little further down, looks like next is.
JTPG.
Yep, JTPG. Number is that?
Well, I'll make a motion that we um can reaffirm Frank Limonius as the delegate and um Member Fabian as the alternate to the Joint Transportation Planning Group with terms to expire June first, twenty twenty-four. I'm not going to second because it's me.
I'll step down and second. Any discussion? You okay with alternate status?
Um, yeah, as a matter of fact, Frank does, uh, I don't think he's missed a meeting yet. And usually the bigger meetings, I join in just as a second set of ears. And right now we have um the, where on there, it's funny hearing us mentioned front and center because of the proposed bridge work on uh, on Pickens Street there, so um, yeah. And I do know, I want to commend Frank again, I mean, you know, people hear this all the time. He really is as great as we say he is. He's worked, he worked with them ahead of time to make the decisions to not close that bridge until it was fixed, but to just go down to, you know, and um, he's been working with them really, really well, so.
All right, um, so we got a first, we got a second, um, Carbone.
Aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Day, aye, thank you very much. Um, I want to just go right down. Uh. Discuss some possible rule of Select Board meeting minutes from March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three and April tenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I would like to abstain from March twenty-seventh if we can do two different motions.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Um, second.
All right, Member Carbone.
Um, aye.
Fabian.
Aye.
Day abstain.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for April tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Um.
Second.
Discussion on that, um, matter of minor nit really, um. It was about the MBTA communities. I just wanted to make it clear that we said we were going to analyze where Lakeville stands, whether or not we're in compliance or not before making any further decisions. Um, but that's all I had, that was the only thing. Um, Carbone?
Aye.
Fabian?
Aye.
Day, aye? Ah. Okay. Uh, that's most of the normal stuff. So now let's go back to process for town administrator contract renewal. Does anybody want, prefer Ari to leave the room or welcome to stay?
Um, no. I, I mean, it says Member from, Member Fabian requested this, I just made it as a suggestion, but I'll go with the request. Um, so I just wanted to remind everyone or make Brian aware, if he's not aware, that we did do a review for Ari last year. So um, there's that available if you want to look at it. Um, I suggest that in the near future, we decide on, because Ari will be here two years. So my thought is to put out to the other two board members whether, you know, we want to go through the review process and then, you know, base that for the contract. There's just, you know, a couple of ways. Um, but as of May sixteenth, we're under, less, we're less than a year, isn't that what it is, May sixteenth? Um, and like I said at the last meeting, everything I'm reading, you know, says if you like your town administrator, you should let them know that. But um, I just wanted to remind the board that it's review, going to be review time too. So that could be one way to do it. We do the review as long as everyone's happy and, you know, then we can go from there. But I really wanted to. Um, I would be happy to work on that, but I will turn it over to the chair for the timing of when it wants to go on the agenda.
Um, appreciate making us aware. I agree, it'd be nice to get this done in the early in the last contract year possible, that's my two cents. Um, did you set when the most recent review is due? Do we have a date set for that?
No.
We do not?
No, because it's actually, the two-year anniversary is May sixteenth. And, you know, last year we had some, it was our first real review that we had done in a while, in a few years.
Good.
So we kind of bounced around a few things. It was mediocre process at best. Um, so I do feel like, you know, we, we should put a little um.
Do you remember how long it took to start that?
Well, that's part of why I call it mediocre because we.
Took a couple of months.
Yeah, it took a couple of months because, you know, we tried to come up with a plan first and um, so. And, and like I said, I'm not opposed to doing work on it. It's just I feel like you're the timing, the chair is the timing person, so I just want to turn that part over to you.
No, that's fine, I'm open to ideas. Um, personally, I think, given what we have in less than the fiscal, I was hoping to have this brought up for discussion, if not started by before the end of the fiscal year, but the review process really isn't starting until the close of the contract year. That's probably not going to happen. Um, but, you know, as with any contract negotiation, you know, if we want to move forward with an extension, renewal, whatever we want to call it, you know, he's within his rights to also say, I'm not interested.
Right.
So we need to have enough time to do a talent search, find somebody, bring them on, get them up to speed. Um, you know, we don't want to be doing that in, you know, March with only a couple of months left. Um, so I don't know if the two of you have any specific thoughts in mind, but like I would really probably like to see this thing closed September, October or so.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Um, I, I don't really want to wait much longer than that to make a decision because like you said, if um, you know, if we can't negotiate or whatever, then we're, you know, looking at not really enough time to hire someone new. So I just feel like the first step to this contract negotiation is getting the review done. And that's why I really wanted to bring it up.
Yep.
Get the review done, and then we know where we stand, we know how everyone feels, and then from there we move forward.
Any thoughts, Leah?
I think that the September, October timeframe is, would be fine to, to have all of that done.
Okay, all right.
But I think that, you know, with the review, May sixteenth is next, you know, three weeks.
Coming right up.
Um, we should be, we should have already been in the process of doing the evaluation. So we should really be on that.
Um, Mr. Chair, I could suggest that Ari, just so you know, too, sends you a copy of the goals that we established last year, so you have those to look at too.
Yep.
Um, and then we can.
I, I'd almost, too, to, it's awkward timing where the election happens and where the contract years happen. Like, I'd almost be partially saying like the review should be closed out earlier in the year. So that in the event of a turnover of a board seat, you've got that person's information captured, at least to some degree.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, because it's not fair to Ari, I think, to have somebody new come on that hasn't worked with him at all and then be one-third of review. That's a little tough. So we will aim for September, October to try to wrap up the process, but we will need to start that process.
Yep.
Um, so is anybody interested in, hey, Ari, if you want to throw your hand up too, interested in coming up with a proposal for a timeline for our next meeting?
Well, I don't feel comfortable telling you what the timeline should be for my review. I, I, what I am willing to do, uh, last year, I put together a sort of self-evaluation against my goals, and I'm happy to put that together.
Okay.
I can get that to you within a week or two.
And I think, I mean, you know, almost at the end of the fiscal year, it's very easy to say too, like, here are some goals that are still in progress or targeted to be completed or not completed, or whatever it might be.
I can't remember, does the contract spell out the review when it's supposed to be done, or does it just say?
It says anniversary.
Anniversary.
Anniversary, that's what I thought.
Yep.
But the, the employee handbook says March for employees, isn't that correct? Around the March timeline?
My contract supersedes that.
Right, no, but I'm just saying in general, the employee handbook says March for all other employees.
There may be, there might be verbiage in the Town Administrator Act Two that touches on it, but I don't think it goes into.
It says you're hard to review.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
All right, so that, all right, so that's something that we need to come up with relatively soon then. But no, good, good discussion point. It sounds like we're all in line with when we want to try to close that out, so let's figure that out real soon. Um, does any member want to put together a timeline or a suggested process? I'm happy to do it.
I mean, you know what, I can, I can work on it, if you want to do it, Brian, that's fine, it's, you know.
Either way, we'll all look at it together in the end, so.
All right, go for it, just put it together.
What's that?
Just go ahead and put it together and bring it for the meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay, I'll do that then, if that's okay.
By that time, I'll provide you with the self-evaluation too.
Okay.
Though that's a long before that.
Twenty-second. All right, excellent. Uh, down to, is there any new business for this evening?
Uh.
I don't believe I have anything.
I just had something for old business and I forgot.
Ah, it's okay.
We have a couple of things.
All right, then unless someone remembers, we'll move on to old business. Um, I know I had two things already that I said I was going to bring up.
Yeah, I, I've got them right here.
All right, let's see if I can remember. One was four fifteen Millennium.
Right.
Um, Town Council came back and said that since we are the water-controlling people, we're okay to.
We supersede the ZBA.
Supersede ZBA on the water, so they did not have to go back to ZBA, let's hold it out. And the other one I'm going to forget.
July meeting.
Yes, thank you. Um, we were looking at pushing the July twenty-fourth meeting out to July thirty-first, if that works for everybody. Um, Ari's got some um events scheduled and that would line up nicely. And we kind of expect July to be a sluggish month. So that would put us, I think it was July tenth, and then it would be July thirty-first, so three weeks in between.
Full disclosure, I'll be taking my annual vacation right after that, so a couple of weeks.
Um, I can't say yes to that, but it's all right.
Okay.
There's two of you.
All right, appreciate it. You can always zoom in and join us if you need to.
You're right, I could. I could.
Um, any correspondence to speak about this evening?
Do we have anything, Tracy? Do we have any correspondence?
Just, yeah, those two items, um, the memo from the town planner regarding the community preservation funding process and memo from the fire chief regarding designation of Lakeville Fire Department as a built-for-life fire department.
Excellent. All right, have I missed anything else on the open session?
Nope.
I think we've got them all at three and a half hours in so far. All right, um, so that is all for open session. We will be doing our executive session this evening?
Fire, I, Rusty.
I'll make it as quick as I possibly can.
All right, okay, everybody heard that. Um, so I will entertain a motion pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight. What is that? Section twenty-one A, Paragraph Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining specifically with PBA Local one eighty-five. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chairman so declares, and pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Paragraph Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. If the chairman declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, in pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Paragraph Seven, apply with open meeting law, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section twenty-two F, approval of executive session minutes for March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and not to return to open session.
So move, second.
Thanks. Carbone?
Carbone, aye.
Fabian?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye, thank you, everybody. We can now be going into executive session. Thanks for joining us this evening.